See, you like the news?
Hi.
You leave it?
No, I'll be here.
Okay. I don't have any. Yeah. Cassanne, could you bring me some more of those, please? That's one of your secrets, put that. Oh, okay. I mean, I just want to support you. Yeah, she wanted, she wanted to speak to that. I think it goes in, it's a part of the county, it's a part of the name, it's probably a hundred. I was going to use. Okay, she's, she's. Thank you. Take that. Okay. Make sure it's fine. It's in public time. Hey, I'm Mary.
I'm good, sir, how are you? Good to see you, how you been?
I'm good.
Good to see you.
Hey, I'm Mary. Well, I'll leave it.
How are you? Are you back? Yeah, how about you? Hi, how are you? Nice to meet you. How you doing? Nice to meet you.
Oh, yeah. I was looking for it to send it to you, and I got it extracted. I'm gonna have to reschedule. But did you get any Zoom links for the meeting?
What, what?
I said that today. Oh, I have one. Okay, I, I sent to the Zoom, the meeting is Wednesday at three o'clock. And it's, uh, it's Zoom. So I sent you the link. When's it tomorrow?
Remember, the cat meeting?
Yeah, that's next week. Next week.
No, it's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow?
According to my calendar.
Oh, the twenty seventh?
Twenty sixth is tomorrow, twenty?
Oh, my God.
Michael. At three, yeah.
You can go ahead and do it.
We will call this meeting to order momentarily. If you have an open seat next to you, you can raise your hands, so that way everyone can have a, the comfort of a seat. There's a few seats up front if anyone's interested. All right, this meeting of the Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order at six oh three PM. We give the floor now to Councilman William Parker Jr. to introduce this evening's invocation.
Thank you, Brother President. Good afternoon, everybody. I would like to introduce you to my neighbor, my friend, the rabbi in training, Matt Brewer, who's gonna share with us, and he's gonna give you the name of his church, because I forget and can't pronounce it, but he's telling you the name of his church.
Sure take for congregation. Hello, everybody. Hashem, God of Abraham, God of Isaac, God of Jacob. I call upon your favor not for my merit, but the merit of my ancestors, Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. On behalf of all that I gathered today, I pray for the agenda set before them. I pray for the wisdom and patience in this assembly meeting. We give thanks for the many blessings that you poured into our lives, into the city. Thank you for the gifts of life, ability fulfilled calling, for love, sustenance, and fellowship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for the freedom to embrace you and all of your varied ways. Thank you for your boundless and gracious nature. May we have harmony in these proceedings today. Please invest in us a nephish of openness and cooperation. When confronted with conflicting interests and differences in opinions, may we have confidence that be harmonious. May we engage in a healthy and productive dialogue. Let us not be blind to the needs of the impoverished in our community and the needs of the community as a whole. In scriptures, you remind us to, to not place stumbling blocks before the blind and to use fair weights and measures in conference. I ask, you ask us to make systems of justice and be righteous in our governance. May you help us to ascend to these ethical tenants that you have gifted us. May we emulate your ways, may we walk humbly and joyfully with you today and every day. May we bring repair to this world in these troubled times. Another say.
Amen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, we're going to read the names of those our community has recently lost. Matthew Barons, an employee, a code enforcement officer for the city of Pontiac. Gary Bumpus. Ronald Fowler Senior. Phyllis Gaffney. Jaclyn Grant. Jackie Grozinski. Louis. Edward Roback. Douglas Ross. Pete Sparks. Mary Tharp. Leslie Twitty. And Marvell Vaughn. Please join us to remember those names, as well as those in your neighborhoods, congregations, and in your heart and family. Thank you, you may be seated. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Here.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Rutherford.
Present, you have a quorum.
All members present and voting, quorum being established, we shall proceed. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Some move.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman. That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Some move.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, to adopt this evening's consent agenda. It includes one set of meeting minutes, the October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two city council meeting minutes. Roll call on adoption of the consent agenda, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries, the consent agenda is adopted. That brings us to this evening's special presentation, a bittersweet moment, but we celebrate the exoneration and return home of Mr. Anthony Kyles, Pontiac resident, who was imprisoned.
My dog. See ya, Kyle.
Nearly twenty-five years ago, his freedom was taken away from him and separated from his family, family for a crime that he did not commit. His name has been cleared, his life resumes, and we want to celebrate and welcome him home. And after we have remarks from Mr. Kyles, from those in his family he'd like to speak, those involved in the, the pursuit of his freedom, we do have two city council resolutions that we will be adopting this evening to add to the record, which recognizes the exoneration of Minister Anthony Kyles and welcomes him home. And the second resolution salutes the work of fire investigator, Mr. Robert Trunkel, in helping clear Mr. Anthony Kyles's name. So with that, not that we want to put you on the spot, but we'd like to put you on the spot to celebrate you, sir. If you'd like to take the podium, you have the floor to reflections that you have, and then you, you can introduce anyone you'd like, and you can all.
When we as a society, y'all have to fund this. Y'all, and y'all through good money and bad money. So it's a hard, it's already hard out here as it is. I've been out here less than two weeks, and I'm appalled at a ten dollar hamburger. I don't understand how they, yeah, what's going on out here? Yeah, this, this, you know, it's, it's heavy to me. I was like, whoa, wait a minute, let's go home and cook. We could spend five more hamburgers than that, you know, at, at the grocery store. But, uh, uh, you know, you get talking up here, you get off track in different little things. But at the end of the day, I want to say this as well, is that I could never, ever, no matter when I'm talking to anybody about what happened to me, and I'm always be, have to speak about the family. Robert and the children, Mercedes, Albert and Demetrius. I met Robert, I have to tell everybody this, that I met Robert one time. And the one time that I met Robert, he came outside and he asked me, hey, I need to buy something, buy some drugs. I said, hey, he said, look, she won't let me back in the house unless I buy something. He said, man, my kids don't got no diapers, they don't got no clothes, they ain't got no food, you know what I'm saying? And he said, look, I gotta go to work in the morning. So I looked at him, I said, okay, I take him and I go bang some food and taking back bad diapers for the kids and everything, take him back home. At the end of the day, though, I related to him because he was a man that got up in the morning and went to work, and he took care of his kids. So when he ran back in that house and tried to save his kids, that's who he was. That's who the man was. And I met him one time, but this was a good man. This is the reason why all these years since I was in prison, I never quit fighting because I had to make sure that I won this. I won this, we had to win this, not only for me and my family, but I had to win it for them. Because at the end of the day, you didn't put something on me, you didn't put, uh, uh... Was, was, we know now, wasn't even a crime. And but it's thanks to Bob and the whole team that was there for me, and, you know, people in my family and everybody that supported me, I know everybody, you know, my sons and my mother, Glennis, she was there for me, you know, and I just want to thank everybody, you know, today for even allowing me to be here, and I want, I'm thankful, I'm blessed to be here, you know what I'm saying? And that's one thing, also one thing, I want to thank God just for even allowing me to wake up, to be able to see this, you know? And we can't never, uh, uh, forget about that, because you can't explain this situation no other kind of way. It can't be explained no other kind of way. When you look at the totality of the circumstance and the story, it's only explained in one, one way. He did this for me, you know? And I thank all of y'all from where I'm speaking.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kyles. And what we'll do now is have reflections from city council members, and then we will, I can read one of them, Pro Tem can read the other, of the resolutions that will be before us, we'll vote on them. We can have a photo of you receiving it, and then we can take a, a two-minute or one-minute recess, so that way everyone, if, if this was the time you wanted to depart the meeting, you can do so with, with convenience and not to disturb the course of the meeting. So with that, I'll start down here. Any council members and mayor who wish to reflect on Mr. Kyles's special presentation?
First of all, congratulations for your freedom, and congratulations for telling your truth and living your truth and knowing the truth, even when people didn't want you to say the truth. It takes great courage to come at the truth when you are facing adversities the way you first. And that speaks a lot about your character, it speaks a lot about your tenacity, and it also speaks a lot, a lot about how you can come out and be a shining light in a world of darkness. So I say congratulations to you and salute.
Councilman Nicholson?
Welcome home. I, it's, this is incredible, but it's also, it's jarring. I mean, every time we sit up here and we're in the same position, it's, it's, it fills your heart with, with joy and with hope, because this never, this didn't happen before. And what you said about the prosecutor and this project, I mean, this is unprecedented, and we need to continue to support this and put more resources behind it to keep this ball rolling. Because we know, I mean, I'm sure you've met plenty of other people that are in this process right now that need our help and need our support and need us to put our arms around them and lift them up when they get home.
Councilman Goodman?
To go along with what, what both of my colleagues said, it's always unfortunate that we keep coming back to the same situation, because the way I look at it is that this is not an exception. The fact that we've had this happen multiple times just since we've been sitting up here means that there are thousands, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of people who are currently going through the same thing that you are, and it just goes to show the problems that our system has and how they've affected communities especially like ours, families that look like mine and yours for as long as we've been here. But i- it's always an amazing thing to begin to see that these things are beginning to come to light, that things are actually happening. The fact that you're able to sit in this chair i- is going to show that things are beginning to happen, even if they're beginning to happen far, far too late. But I think this is just a, a way of us knowing that we're moving down the right path and only really showing us that we should be moving faster in this direction to make sure that there are more of you who can sit in, in chambers like this and be surrounded by loved ones, surrounded by a community that you deserve to be in, so.
Mayor Tim Greimel?
Well, yes, welcome home, Anthony. This has been a long time coming, and it certainly underlines all of the injustices that people in our country face. And yes, on the one hand, it is a joyous occasion, but it's also a reminder of, of just a horrific experience that you've gone through. And we've had a couple of folks in your situation come through city council chambers already, earlier this year, where they've been exonerated. And I can't think of anything more horrific than being wrongly convicted and sentenced for a crime that one didn't commit. And it's almost unthinkable to, to think about what somebody in that position, in your position, has gone through. And it's also horrific on, on the other side of the coin. It means that the, the actual perpetrator has, has not been held accountable as well. And so the work that the Innocence Project does, the work that the prosecutor's conviction integrity unit does, is so, so important, and I think all of us up here really want to extend our appreciation to them, and both our congratulations to you, but also our, our sympathy and our condolences to you for what you've gone through, two and a half decades now, over two and a half decades.
Councilman Parker?
Thank you, sir. Well, certainly I can't improve upon what has already been said, but as I see you, I know that you, when you went, you was going through a period of darkness, and now you've been released into a period of light. And I just wanted to let you know that as you are free, whenever you can catch up with me, your next ten dollar hamburger is on me.
That's on taste.
We can get you a twenty dollar burger now. We do it together.
Councilwoman? Thank you, Councilwoman Kathleen James.
Touche. I, I agree with you, Pastor Parker. If, if, if I see you out, you're the one after Pastor Parker is on me. So we'll, we'll help you to adjust to the ten dollar hamburger. But I, I did want to say again, congratulations to you to be able to see freedom, even if it's after twenty-seven years. To be able to see it is a good thing. I, I heard what you said, that these kinds of things affect all of us, and they do, because we all are really one. And when one person is wronged, as you have been wronged, it does affect all of us. You know, we, we all carry that, that hurt and just that, all of those feelings of what you have gone through, we all bear some of them ourselves. So we're really sorry, I am really sorry that you had to endure this. I want to congratulate you on being home. I want to commend your family for sticking with you. Family is such a wonderful thing. Families and people that care about us, who stick with us, that's the only thing that's gonna get us through these dark times. It's the love that we have for each other. And so I commend you, and I'm so happy to see you home. And if there's anything that we can do to help you, buying hamburgers or whatever, please let us know. Thank you.
Council President William A. Carrington?
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. I just want to say, man, I can't even imagine walking in your shoes as an innocent man. You know, I, I've taken this journey, but it definitely wasn't as an innocent man. So I can't even fathom being in that situation, knowing that I did not commit that crime. So I salute you. I salute you for your positivity that you've shown, shown in this chambers today. Most people will be mad and upset. But you show so much love for your family, for the people that helped you gain your freedom. And I know you're gonna be successful on this side. I know you're gonna be successful on this side, and if I could do anything, call, talk to me, kick ideas off me, I'm open to that, because you, you're a beautiful spirit, man, and I'm glad you're back here in Pontiac. Thank you.
Could I please have a motion to adopt the resolution welcoming Anthony Kyles home?
Some move.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by- It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford and seconded by President Pro Tem Carrington. Whereas, every resident of the city of Pontiac, Michigan, has the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and those rights should inherently include protection of Pontiac residents by the justice system at the municipal, state, and federal levels. And whereas Mr. Anthony Kyles was wrongfully convicted of four counts of second-degree murder nearly 25 years ago in connection with the deaths of four people killed in a house fire in the 300 block of Chandler Street in Pontiac, including three young children. And whereas Mr. Kyles was sentenced to life in prison and was deprived of an excruciating number of years of freedom to live his life and be with his family. And whereas Mr. Kyles always maintained his innocence, and a growing number of advocates added their voices to the calls for his exoneration and release. And whereas the Michigan Innocence Clinic and the Conviction Integrity Unit at the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office reviewed Mr. Kyles's case, and it was after an independent fire investigator, Robert Trinkle, was hired to take a deeper dive into the case that it became clear that Mr. Kyles was innocent and had been wrongfully convicted. And whereas it was Robert Trinkle who determined that the fire was most likely caused by an improperly rewired cord on a space heater, started in a bedroom, was not due to arson, and did not originate from the porch, thereby disproving the prosecution's original theory that was presented during Mr. Kyles's trial in 1997, that the fire was intentionally set and started on the porch. It was also discovered that the sole eyewitness lied when he testified that he saw Mr. Kyles start the fire. And whereas, upon the request of Oakland County Prosecutor Karen McDonald, along with Mr. Kyles's attorneys at the Michigan Innocence Clinic, on Wednesday, October 12, 2012, Oakland County Circuit Court Judge Daniel O'Brien threw out Mr. Kyles's convictions, and Mr. Kyles was finally freed from prison. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Pontiac City Council, in partnership with Pontiac Mayor Tim Greimel, hereby warmly welcomes Mr. Anthony Kyles home from his unjust incarceration. And further resolved, we express the community's heartbreak to Mr. Kyles and his entire family for the intensely unjust steps that led to the loss of his freedom, the dismantling of his life, and the hurt to both his family and the family of the crime victim who was deprived of true justice for their tragic loss. And further resolved, the city council calls upon the entire Pontiac community to extend their hands and their hearts to help welcome Mr. Kyles and to assist him in his transition. And further resolved, we celebrate the work of the Conviction Integrity Unit at the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office, the Michigan Innocence Clinic, and Robert Trinkle for their leadership and advocacy in helping Mr. Kyles restore his freedom and for assisting him to prove his innocence. Roll call and adoption of the resolution, Clerk Doyle?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Kyles. We shall now proceed with the second resolution. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution saluting the work of fire investigator Mr. Robert Trinkle in helping clear Mr. Anthony Kyles's name?
Support.
Moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford. President Pro Tem Carrington, could you please read the text to the resolution?
Yes, President McGinnis. Whereas every citizen of the city of Pontiac, Michigan, has the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and those rights should inherently include protection of Pontiac residents by the justice system at the municipal, state, and federal levels. Whereas Mr. Anthony Kyles was wrongly convicted of four counts of second-degree murder nearly 25 years ago in connection with the deaths of four people killed in a house fire in the 300 block of Chandler Street in Pontiac, including three young children. And whereas Mr. Kyles was sentenced to life in prison and was deprived of an excruciating number of years of freedom to live his life and be with his family. And whereas Mr. Kyles always maintained his innocence, and a growing number of advocates added their voices to the calls for his exoneration and release. And whereas Robert Trinkle worked for over 20 years in the Detroit Fire Department, and due to his fire expertise in investigating over 1,000 fires during his career, was hired by the Conviction Integrity Unit at the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office to investigate Anthony Kyles's case. And whereas it was Robert Trinkle who determined that the fire was most likely caused by improperly rewired coil on a space heater, started in a bedroom, was not due to arson, and did not originate from the porch, thereby disproving the prosecutor's theory which presented during Mr. Kyles's trial in 1997 that the fire was intentionally set and started on the porch. And whereas Mr. Trinkle adamantly supported Anthony Kyles and spent over $1,100 hours working to prove Mr. Kyles's innocence despite never meeting or talking to Mr. Kyles. And whereas Mr. Trinkle's fight for justice for Anthony Kyles further prompted Mr. Trinkle to stop cutting his hair and shaving until Mr. Kyles was freed from prison, symbolizing that Mr. Kyles was in prison 50 times longer than his hair had been growing. And whereas on Wednesday, October 12, 2022, Oakland County Circuit Judge Daniel O'Brien threw out Mr. Kyles's conviction, and he was finally refreed from prison. Now therefore, it be resolved that we, the members of the Pontiac City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Pontiac, and in partnership with Pontiac Mayor Tim Greimel, recognize and salute Robert Trinkle for his contributions of leadership, selflessness, and his unwavering dedication to his quest for freedom and justice for Anthony Kyles. Thank you.
Mr. Trinkle, would you please rise? Let's give this man a standing ovation. With that, what we'll do now is a brief group photo for those that need one. Oh, I'm sorry, so exuberant that I didn't call the vote on the resolution. Roll call and adoption of that city council resolution recognizing Robert Trinkle, Clerk Doyle?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. Congratulations again, Mr. Trinkle. Now what we'll do is, the city council members and mayor will line up on this side, and we can do a photo with Mr. Kyles, and then a photo with Mr. Trinkle, and it could be a group photo with you and your family and attorneys. And then we will do a brief recess so that everyone, if they want to regroup, they can do it either outside or in the hallway, so that way the meeting will continue. So with that, city council members, let's join for the presentation of the adopted resolution.
We can't see Pastor Parker. Okay, that's her. You want to get in? I'm going to the front. Wait a minute, don't move, don't move.
Let's give a warm Pontiac round of applause. Without objection, we'll stand at recess for two minutes.
Hey, good to see you, Kevin. Appreciate it.
Three good days of sun. Had them three good days of sun, and I ain't got fish, when I went fishing in Saturday.
Oh, did you go Saturday?
I did go Saturday.
Yeah. You got a good day, you got a day in.
I didn't catch nothing.
This is WDE10, I've never heard of them.
All right.
Oh, yeah. Oh, my God, because you look just... We were like, there's no...
Oh, Mike is bringing water. Bless him. Thank you.
The meeting will resume momentarily. Photos can continue in the lobby or in the hallway. The meeting shall resume in 10 seconds.
Michael, does it help if I do it like this, so you can hear me better? Yeah. Thank you. Chamberlain Street. Chamberlain Street. 3, 5, 3, 2.
Council President Emeritus Waterman, could you please nudge the door? Thank you very much. Your service to the community continues forevermore. The recess has expired. We'll continue with the agenda. We are now at recognition of elected officials. I did see Pontiac School Board President Gil Garrett was with us this evening, Pontiac School Board Vice President Kenyatta Bowman. Is trustee Gross now secretary Gross? Secretary of the School Board, trustee Kevin Gross was also with us this evening. Are there any elected officials that wish to take the microphone and be recognized this evening? All right, and I do want to give a shout out. I also now see trustee from the Pontiac Library Board, H. Bill Maxi. Recognition of elected officials concluded. We are now at agenda address. President Pro Tem Carrington, are there any requests?
Yes, President McGinnis. Ms. Patrice Waterman, item number six. Turn the mic on.
Evening? Yes. Okay. I'm here speaking on agenda item number six regarding the change on Golf Drive, C1 local commercial, P1 parking to M1 light manufacturing for reconditioned rezoning to have a marijuana facility that abuts my subdivision, which is personal to me and my livelihood. This city has more than enough places designated for this purpose. So now we're going to further inundate our city to accommodate people financially that don't live in our city because of promises made. Our children who live in the immediate area that walk to get candy and other items will also witness marijuana distribution place. You tell me who gains? Certainly not the community or our children, just special interest groups. If allowed, opening up, this will open up Pandora's Box. If memory serves me correctly, this applicant request was previously denied. So I would like to know why the administration that states on the agenda is asking to have this brought back to planning when they denied it as well. So, what this does for me is motivates me to do what I need to do. You have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Chuck Johnson, what item, sir?
Okay. This is a request to, for the council to sign a agreement or a contract, and I'm concerned about how the contract is structured as it relates to the elimination of hazardous areas on the sidewalk. Now, I noticed that before they took the sidewalk completely out and replaced it, and in a lot of areas, they just took a grinder and grind ground down... And in a lot of areas, they just took a grinder and grind ground down the high point. So they'd be level with the approaching slab. It'd be very interesting just to know what this contract is going to consist of so that those of us who are concerned will know exactly what the contractor is going to be called to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Deidre Waterman.
Good evening. I'm also here to speak to Items Number Six and Number Seven concerning medical marijuana on your agenda. I see that Number Seven, Number Six has already been kicked back to the, is recommended to be kicked back by the administration already. So I will speak to Number Six, as did former Council President Patrice Waterman. And this concerns a medical marijuana facility, proposed facility, that's coming to, was given a special exemption permit through the Planning Commission, through a loophole in the ordinance that was passed by the voters to be able to have a medical marijuana facility located in a residential area. And it's going to be positioned three doors about from a daycare facility. Now, one of the things when medical marijuana came to town, and this was voted, it passed by one vote. There was a recount, and it couldn't be recounted by the canvassers because the clerk's office hadn't closed properly and sealed the ballots for a lot of absentee votes and seven districts out of District Seven. So the voters never really knew who wrote it, because nobody came forward and said who wrote that ordinance. But there is a loophole in it that is provided. Now, as we had medical marijuana passed, we went and had 20 or so town halls, meetings with all the residents. And one thing residents universally said was, please do not put medical marijuana facilities in our neighborhoods. You can put them in all the other destiny, but don't put it in our neighborhoods. Don't put it close to churches, daycare centers, or playgrounds where children play. So this is what they're being asked to do. And we ask you not to do that on behalf of the citizens of Pontiac, who I speak to, and I feel duty obligated to bring that to you for your consideration. We also hope that as you are considering recreational marijuana, that this council close those loopholes so that our neighborhoods will not be impinged upon by marijuana facilities, which is what the voters said they did not want to happen.
Thank you, Dr. Waterman. Ms. Gloria Miller. Ms. Sanya May, what item? Okay, we got to put you on a second, on public comment. Okay. Yes, you're fine. You're fine. And I believe the last name? Last name Blossom? That concludes Agenda Address.
Thank you, President Protem Carrington. Is there a motion to adopt, we move to the Agenda Items? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the city to enter into a contract with Precision Concrete Inc. for the sidewalk trip hazard elimination program and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. The motion is now before us. Administration, you have the floor for information.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I want to turn it over to Mr. Al Cooley, who will describe the nature of this contract. It was competitively bid and went through our purchasing division. But in terms of the specific purpose of the contract, which is to make uneven sidewalks more even, I'll defer to the technical expertise of Mr. Cooley.
Good evening, Council. Yes, so this is a program that we've done over the last several years. And it mitigates some of the smaller trip hazards within the sidewalks. I think the specifications in the, in the RFP were between a quarter of an inch to up to two inches. But we prefer not to do the two inch because that takes away some of the integrity of the sidewalk. So we will have one of our superintendents or one of our inspectors.
Please close the door. Thank you.
We'll have one of, either superintendent or inspector on the job marking all these locations that we do this type of work in. And what this is, is kind of a horizontal saw cut grinding that, that will take away the trip hazard of the sidewalk. What this also helps us do is, as we're replacing flags of sidewalk, this is a flag that we typically would take out and remove. This saves us dollars so that the CDBG funds that the council had approved before will go farther in our sidewalk replacement program. A very noticeable area to see what type of work this is, is when you walk into City Hall. There's an ADA ramp there at the beginning of the sidewalk, walking into the front door. And you'll notice around that ADA ramp, it had started to lift up away from the sidewalk about a half an inch. And we had this horizontal cutting done there, and it's a very smooth finish. You'll see the aggregate where it's been cut and smooth. And it's all in the specifications that we can't do it to hold water. There's several different items that are in there, and like I say, there will be a city representative on the job while this is being done.
Discussion from Council. Councilman Parker, you have the floor.
I did have a question. You mentioned that it's, that you're going to be grinding. Did you say you're grinding?
Yeah, it's a, it's a cutting in a grinding style. So they're, they're smaller handheld grinders that they mark the angles on, and they do it with a bagging system. So it collects the dust and keeps it from going within the area and as they grind off sections of the sidewalk.
So then, look reading on page 58 where it says grinding or pulverizing of the concrete shall not be permitted. How did we get to that?
So, so it's, it's more of a cut within the sidewalk. So they cut it on an angle, but then it's also, as they're cutting, it's grinding it smooth. So it's a smooth finish where it's not textured or, or even more of a rough hazard for more tripping. What that specification is saying is that, like actually smashing or grinding in a, in a big section of area.
Well, I apologize. I did go to two classes. No grinding shall be permitted, to me means no grinding shall be permitted. So again, how did we get to that?
Yeah, I don't have that section with me to know, to be able to answer that question exactly. But it's more of a cutting than it is a grinding.
Then it should just not say it's cutting and not, matter of fact, it says no grinding or pulverizing, which I would think cutting would be. But maybe not. I don't, I don't know, I don't have your expertise at it, but I do know when I read no, it means no.
And maybe what I'm saying is maybe I misspoke when I said it would be grinding because it's more of an actual cutting of the sidewalk.
Okay.
President Protem Carrington?
Thank you, President McGinnis. So have the city done an assessment of our sidewalks throughout the neighborhoods to determine how much this contract will actually cover?
So the way that this contract has typically been worked in the past is this contractor will go in front of the CDBG contractor to go through the same sections of areas that the CDBG contractor is going in. So that any of the smaller trip hazards this work can be done to, so that it keeps us from replacing those flags of sidewalk. So that the contract will, the contractor will be able to go farther within those areas. So what this contract will typically do each year is every year that we have these sections that we go to for CDBG work, this contractor will go in front of it. It's also done in different areas, like we did some of this work around the courthouse when there were some trip hazard issues up there. We did it out front here when there was a trip hazard. So it's, it's a good contract to have on hand so that if something comes up small, we can go have that contractor take care of it.
My follow-up question. And do you know, offhand, do you know the exact districts that we're talking about? So I know this is limited, so what districts are you talking about?
It was included in the packet. There's mapping of where it goes through. I believe we're starting in District Two in that area Section Five, which would be over the Pioneer Highlands area. We're moving up to that section that is called Number Three. Then over to 10 and then to 15, and it bounces from, I believe from two, three, possibly into four a little bit. And then over to five and six together.
Okay, all right. Thank you. No further questions.
Councilman Nicholson, Councilman James.
So you said this, this work comes in front of the, the actual replacement contractor. Is that what's held up? I know we were talking about the timeline being around now when they were going to get to work. Is that, do we know what the new timeline is?
So they are still, there's still a couple of sections that they're going to start on. The holdup was getting all the contracts signed. Very hopeful they'll be signed this week and we'll have a notice proceed to that contractor. And there's a couple of sections that they're going to get started on right away, and then this contract will follow right after.
As a follow-up, do we know how much notice the residents will get when their section of sidewalk will be?
Very typically, what the DPW recommends is two weeks or more.
Oh, wow, okay. So we're looking at, at this point, probably three weeks before work gets started?
For certain, yeah, for certain areas, but the one area the residents know that we're coming and that should be within the next two weeks.
And that's in Pioneer Highlands?
Pioneer, there's one section off of Chamberlain that's going to be done first, and then we're moving over to Pioneer Highlands.
Thank you.
Councilman James, Councilman Rutherford.
Yeah, it looks like this, just to clarify, because somebody mentioned that we're going to be reducing the sidewalks rather than replacing it. But this is in addition to the CDBG sidewalk replacement work that's being done, correct?
Correct. These will work in conjunction together.
Yeah, and you answered my question, because my first question was, is this the first year we've done that? But you said this is not the first year.
No, we've used this, actually, we've used this contractor, I believe, for three years now. And this, the previous contracts were one-year contracts that we had done. And that's why this RFP was put out, because those contracts were expired.
And you found that this work does help, it does work with the work that the CDBG, the sidewalk repairs are doing?
Yeah, we feel in DPW that this, this helps greatly extend the amount of sidewalk replacement, the areas that we can get to. Because we're not replacing every flag, we're just replacing the ones that can, that this stuff, this type of work cannot be done on.
Okay, the estimate, the low bidder, I think the bid came in at 130, 132,000?
Correct.
And it looks like we actually have 150 budgeted for this particular work?
Correct.
Okay. So it really is not a lot of money. So is, how far is that going to go?
It'll go pretty far. And it'll get through the majority of what the CDBG areas are that we need to do. And that's pretty much based off of, you know, we sent them the same mapping that we sent to the CDBG contractor. Said, hey, we're going to do work in this area. This is kind of what we think needs to be done, just from taking a quick look at it. They come back with these bids. We, we were leaving money within there, you know. Like you said, we have 150 budgeted, there's about 132 here. And that gives us a little leeway that if we need to do some extra areas outside of this, that we can do that. And this is typically what we budget every, every year that we've done this in the past. And if we find that this is working even better than what it is, then next fiscal year, we can budget even more dollars towards this.
Okay, the last question is your, your specification is .25 to two mils. I'm kind of wondering, how are they going to, are they going to look at the worst of the worst in the sidewalks being unlevel? Are they going to take maybe up to like one, one and a half inches off maybe a sidewalk that's unlevel to four? Or they just, are they going to pick the worst ones and try to improve them? Or are they going to stay with the ones that they can make slight improvements? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, so what we typically like them to do is get through the ones that it, that it makes, that the small gaps are on. You know, the half inch to the one inch, we get through the majority of those. And we, we leave the larger ones that we feel if they're taking a lot of that material off and it's going to weaken that sidewalk, we leave them for them flags to be replaced through the, through the other program.
Okay.
Councilman Rutherford, Councilman Parker.
Just for clarity, can you explain to the audience at home why there weren't any selections in District One?
So it's my understanding that the, the area selected for District One is slated for the next round of CDBG dollars. That's one of the sections that we would be going to for the next round of this sidewalk type work. There was some work done in District One, I believe, either last year or the year before last. It was, I believe it was within the last two years. And it was down in the area of Nebraska and all those different areas, where this type of work and some replacement stuff was done as well.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So could you give me a definite timeline? When is the CBG funds actually coming in for District? Is it this year coming up or the?
So, so those CDBG dollars, we don't receive until the end of this December. So then they will go in the next program. So the next program, when we put that program together, it'll be included as part of that program. That'll come probably spring or summer.
Thank you so much.
Councilman Parker.
Follow-up question. As you just said, this is, we've done this before. So where is there an area that we can look at that we can see the results of what's been done?
I can send you the mappings to the areas that we've done in the past, but like I said, we did this work around the courthouse. You'll see a lot of this done around, all the sidewalks around the courthouse. There's some of it done out front here. When you leave tonight, you'll be able to notice it. Like I say, there's a very new section of concrete done at the end of the sidewalk just before you hit the parking lot, and it's the ADA ramp. And that ramp was pushed up, I want to say about half or three quarters of an inch when I first hired on back in 17. And we did this program out there as well, and you'll be able to see where this program has sawed that concrete off and made a smooth transition where you won't trip on that.
Okay, thank you.
I want to point out for the community's benefit that the term, the duration of this contract is three years. And there will be an option for the extension of the contract for two additional one-year periods. But the city shall inform the contractor a minimum of 30 days prior to the expiration about whether they will, whether we will enact those optional years. Any final discussion on the motion before us? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on the adoption of the resolution to approve the city to enter into a contract with Precision Concrete Inc. for the sidewalk trip hazard elimination program and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Point of clarity, President. Can we ask that before we vote on this, that they correct the language where it says no grinding?
There, there's three terms that I saw in the contract. There's pulverizing, grinding, and saw cutting. So at least when it comes to concrete professionals, they're delineating, there, there's a difference technically between grinding and saw cutting.
But where I read, it said no grinding. So can we do something with that language?
Is there a motion to amend or to postpone?
Well, if, if that's what I need to do, I'll make a motion to amend the contract.
I need a point of clarity on that. Are you intending to permit grinding? Because it sounded like the, the director explained that he used the wrong term. So I want to make sure we're not amending the contract if it was not really, the issue wasn't with the contract, it was with.
The issue was found on page 58 where it says no grinding.
I understand that. Again, the director explained that that was his mistake in using the term grinding, and that's where the confusion came into place. So yes, grinding is still not permitted, saw cutting is what we're actually talking about.
With all due respect, sir, I understand that, but the paper we're saying says grinding. And I'm just asking, can that particular line be omitted or amended?
So we're not, I don't think we're in a position to amend the contract on the floor, but we, if there's interest to postpone it for one week to, for further research and review or to pursue language changes. Is there a motion to postpone for one week?
You making a motion, sir? If that's what has to be taken to get the language to be correct for what we're doing, then yes, I am making a motion that we delay it for a week.
There's been a motion by Councilman Parker to postpone this vote for one week. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Goodman. Any discussion on postponement?
I'm trying to find where he is, where he's, he said page 58.
Page 58.
On the motion to postpone for one week, roll call Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
No.
James?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Nicholson?
No.
Free A, four N's.
That motion fails. We now have the motion before us on the adoption of the resolution to enter into a contract with Precision Concrete Inc. Roll call on adoption, Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
No.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Five yeas, two nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment?
So moved.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman to adopt the resolution. This is for budget year 2022, 2023, increase the budget appropriation in the insurance fund GL account, 659-864-716-001. Medical insurance retire account in the amount of $3,050,000. Increase the revenue estimate in the insurance fund GL account, 659-000-680100. Medical GRS account in the amount of $250,000. Increase the revenue estimate in the insurance fund FL account, 659-000-680200. Medical PFRS account in the amount of $2,800,000. So that's been moved and seconded. What would, this would do is authorize the city clerk to post it, and then it'll come back in two weeks when the community has the opportunity to be notified and, and research what the proposed budget amendment is, and it'll be back before us. So any discussion on the posting, the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish it? Mayor Administration, any information you'd like to provide?
Thank you, Mr. President. The reason why we're proposing this budget amendment is that when we approved the budget that went into effect on July 1st, it was anticipated that the general VIVA and the police and fire VIVA would be merged by this point in time, and that they would be paying retiree healthcare medical claims directly. Because the city and CIPRIA have not yet finalized an amendment to the settlement agreement allowing for that merger to occur, that merger has not yet happened. I, to be a little more specific, the only thing preventing that merger from happening is that the settlement agreement that was entered into by CIPRIA and the city, and CIPRIA, of course, is the group that represents city retirees, when that settlement agreement was entered into five years ago, it required IRS approval for that merger to happen. The IRS simply does not give approval or denial to such mergers. Both CIPRIA and the city have agreed to eliminate that provision to the settlement agreement, but have not reached agreement on some other matters. We have suggested to CIPRIA that we at least reach agreement on that and go before the judge and say at least amend the settlement agreement to eliminate the requirement for IRS approval so that this could occur, but CIPRIA has not been willing to do so piecemeal or in part. As a result, that merger still has not happened. This would simply continue the practice from that, that, that had occurred in the past, at least in regard, I believe, to the police and fire VIVA, which is that the city will pay these claims and then be reimbursed by the VIBAs, as opposed to the VIBAs paying that directly as we anticipated when the budget went into effect on July 1st. This budget amendment would simply allow for the mechanism for us to pay those claims directly and then be reimbursed by the VIVA, which we did not anticipate needing to be the case when the budget went into effect on July 1st. So it doesn't change the ultimate bottom line for the city, but it will facilitate us paying those medical claims and then getting reimbursed from the VIBAs.
President Pro Tem Carrington, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGuinness. Mayor, if you can, how long does it take for us to get reimbursed for these medical claims?
I'm going to defer to Deputy Mayor Stevens for, for his insights into that.
We generally get reimbursed within 30 days of us actually sending out the invoice to get reimbursed. The only other thing that I would add, because eventually this is going to need to come up, is that the bill that we have in front of us now actually has a due date that is before we will get through the full process of amending the budget. So we do want at least some, 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 some direction from council that you understand we need to make a payment before the actual budget amendment can go through the entire process. But normally, within 30 days of us billing, we receive the receipts.
All right, thank you. No further questions.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment. This will be back before City Council in two weeks' time for further consideration. Clerk Doyle, your roll call.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We are now at the resolution to approve the zoning map amendment, ZMA 22-04, conditional rezoning zoning map amendment for 645 South Old Telegraph Road and 1056 Gulf Drive. So as the agenda reflects, the administration recommends that the City Council refer this conditional rezoning request back to the Planning Commission. We'll give the floor to the administration and staff to elaborate further, but I can share that the Planning Commission voted 5-0 to recommend denial, and because it is a conditional rezoning, that the conditions that the applicant submitted, he has since requested to change them to try and reflect the concerns that were addressed before. And so that requires, and we'll ask staff to confirm, the process to restart itself, meaning it will have to go for a new public hearing and a new Planning Commission recommendation and consideration, because it's essentially a new conditional rezoning request. So Mayor Grimaldi, you have the floor from there.
I couldn't have said it any better myself, so Mr. Smith, or Ms. Lockren, but Mr. Smith, take it from there.
Thank you, Mayor Grimaldi. Thank you, Council President. You would be correct, the Planning Commission didn't make the recommending vote for denial. Since then, the applicant has proposed changes to that agreement, so because those are changes to the conditional rezoning as a whole, we are recommending, recommending it be sent back to Planning Commission for consideration, and then the new agreement and the new recommendation would then be presented back to this body.
Clerk Doyle and Legislative Council Sharp, should we still have a motion on the resolution and then motion to postpone, or can we just motion to make that straight up? The motion is to refer the matter back to the, the Planning Commission for review?
I mean, council has the option, obviously, to, you know, accept, reject, or send back. But I guess, I just, my question is, though he has proposed this after the fact, how does he get the opportunity to redo? If it's going to start it all over, then why wouldn't council just deny it?
Yes.
And then let the process start all over? How do you get the benefit of presenting and then after the fact saying, I want to redo my agreement?
Mayor and staff, any further information on that?
And if I may, following that meeting, there were comments as related to the duration of some of the items in the agreement, and in response to those items, those are the ones he's requesting to change. So-
I watched it, but I'm just saying that, again, I don't understand after the fact. It's one thing if before he appeared or while appearing, before they made the recommendation, he said, you know what, I want to change it, I don't want to go forward, before you had the body to give a recommendation.
Yes.
So how do you get the benefit of doing it after the fact, after you listened to the comments? Because it was after they gave comments, right, that there were some indication that he wanted to change it.
So you are correct, the council is presented with the option to send it back for reconsideration or to formally deny the matter, and then it be re-presented at, you know, the process starting anew.
The challenge is that we actually don't have a motion before us right now, so I don't want to go too down, far down the path of debating it without something in front of us. But from the technical side, Clerk Doyle, has there been any, any action of councils present or passed where we can essentially refer an item before we even make an initial motion of approval or denial?
I believe, thank you, Mr. President, I believe that is your, would be your action. Your action is either to vote yes, vote no, or to refer back to planning.
Is there a motion to refer the resolution, the conditional rezoning request back to the Planning Commission?
I still have questions about the, the difference between the two options, just, administratively, I mean, well, I mean, the two that I would consider. Is it okay to ask those questions?
We really need to have a motion before us before we're debating-
I, I wouldn't be able to make a motion without understanding the ramifications-
Legislative Council Sharp?
Just to probably provide a little bit clarity, maybe this is why I here, clear it up. So I think if you refer it back, obviously, you have to refer it back with instructions on something, right? So if you make the motion to refer it back, it's got to be based on something. So whether it's, it's up to the council as to why you want to refer it back, but there has to be some direction.
And if I may, the process would be the same. You could refer it back with directions, and then that would kick off the new changes to the agreement and another public hearing, or you can deny it, and then he would still be required to resubmit, start that process over, and there will be another public hearing. So the process will be the same. It's, do you want to send it back with instructions, or do you want him to restart that process?
Does anyone have a motion?
Yeah, I have a motion.
Councilman James, had a hand first.
I don't have a motion, but I would like to see us deal with it as it's been presented to us, either to accept or reject it, because there's been no discussion of the proposal that was, you know, was rejected by planning. So-
Thank you.
I think it's premature for us to do anything other than to consider what's before us.
President Pro Tem Carrington?
Yes. Can I make a motion, President McGuinness?
Go for it.
I make a motion to reject based on the recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Support.
All right, so there's a, and what I want to do is make sure that the resolution before us-
So to executive staff, we did not provide the resolution for denial as we, the recommendation was to send it back. So they, this council may not have a formal resolution for denial.
I believe the, the, two, two options, it was, yeah.
Okay, so thank you very much. So the motion by President Pro Tem Carrington is the resolution for denial of the application for the conditional rezoning map amendment, and this is again, ZMA 22-04, 645 South Old Telegraph Road, 1056 Gulf Drive, parcels 6414-31-381-27, and 6414-31-458-10, the rezoning from C1 Local Commercial District and P1 Parking District to M1 Light Manufacturing with Conditions as requested by the petitioner, Get Your Greens LLC. So it's been moved by President Pro Tem Carrington and seconded by Councilman Goodman for the resolution for denial. And so with that, the motion is before us. We'll give the floor to administration and staff to share what the, the applicant was requesting.
All right, so- Please, Mr. Donovan, Mr. Donovan Smith.
And I'm sorry I missed that. We, did we move to the next one, or are we on the same one?
We are still on the South Old Telegraph and Gulf Drive. The motion before us is denial. That was the recommendation of the Planning Commission, so that it obviously would not prevent or preclude, unless there's any information that should be shared with us, the applicant submitting a new conditional rezoning request to the Planning Commission.
Correct.
Which that, whatever that recommendation is, would come before us. So the, at least those that have moved and seconded the motion is, their preference is to have a clean matter, so that way it's hearing the application as it was submitted and the recommendation that came out of the Planning Commission prompting City Council to make a verdict and then go from there. I want to point out that zoning map amendment changes require two readings by City Council, so I anticipate perhaps denial requires two readings, but I see Clerk Doyle with a hand.
Right, thank you, Mr. President. So that's what I was going to point out, if you're voting to deny, then it would not be like an ordinance. It would just be a resolution to deny, which means you can take action right now.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Mr. Smith, any information you'd like to provide from the, the Planning Commission's recommendation, the staff perspective, what the applicant was pursuing?
Okay, the, just in summary, the applicant has proposed to conditionally rezon the C1 and P1 parcels to M1 to allow for a grow and processing facility. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on, let's see, August, in August for that item. It was tabled and then brought back in October, and that was the recommendation for denial for the various zoning reasons outlined in the technical report, adjacency to residential, the M1 proposed district, and the location of the facility outside of the medical marijuana overlay districts that do permit grow and processing.
Thank you. Councilman Rutherford, and then Councilman Nicholson.
The address 118 West Lawrence, is that not a near residential?
118 West Lawrence was zoned commercial, and it was conditionally rezoned to M1-
But my question is, is it a near residential?
Is it near residential? The, that property is at the end of the street, the residentials are at the other end of the street, so yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Nicholson.
Is there a, is there a time period by which if someone is denied, that they have to wait to make a new application?
The time period is outlined in the zoning ordinance. I don't want to misquote and, and say the wrong time, but it is provided in the ordinance.
So they will be penalized at waiting period to submit a new application?
Yes.
Pro Tem Carrington, and then Councilman Rutherford.
I guess some of my concerns is, how, how long has this gentleman owned this property?
We have done, we did process a zoning map amendment in 2020, so as long as I am aware, the applicant has owned that property since 2020.
And during that time, what was, what did he state that he had the plan used for that particular property?
In 20-
If you can remember, I don't know if he was there during this time.
This rezoning, as today, proposes to rezon two parcels to allow for grow and processing. The application in 2020 was to rezon one parcel to allow for grow, and then I misspoke, there was a 2018 rezoning to allow for an event space under the same applicant, so at least since 2018.
So basically, going from event space to medical marijuana?
Yes.
Okay, all right, just for clarity. So what, what has been the city's take on him upkeeping of that property? Because it's been, I drive past her all the time, so I see that one building has been worked on in the last past six months, but what has, what has he done when it comes to moving those buildings to a state of making our community look beautiful in the last, since he, in 2018?
The, the applicant had indicated that he has completed several improvements to the building, such as the windows, providing some form of security to the property. However, during the Planning Commission, some of the commissioners did indicate that they had identified other issues related to blight that raised a concern, and they felt that some improvements should have been made, and they were not made.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Councilman Rutherford?
So how many of the, of these buildings been, have been approved in residential areas? I, I know, but I just want to see if you want to tell me. Go ahead.
We have completed three rezonings. One was a rezoning from residential to manufacturing. The other rezonings were from some form of commercial or manufacturing to a manufacturing district. So only one was a rezoning from residential to manufacturing.
And so my question is, what was the difference between that residential being approved and this? I don't understand the difference, because we voted to approve those. So now we're saying, all of a sudden, because we don't like the building, how it looks, we're saying because it's out on the corner, because I live in Washington Park, we're saying we don't want that, but it's a weed place right around the corner, that's right in front of Home Depot that's about to open too. So what's good for the goose, to me, is good for the gander. So I just need clarity on how we can say this one is bad, but all the other two prior to this was good.
Yes, so as it relates to the facility that is opening up at 939 Orchard Lake, which is two blocks around the corner. That is a proposed provisioning center that has applied for license, and according to the overlay district or the medical marijuana facilities ordinance, five provisioning centers are permitted outside of the overlay. So that site is a permitted site, special exemption- So that site is a permitted site, special exemption, license permitted by right, whereas this site is, they have not been granted a license, grow is not permitted by right outside the overlay. So there are some slight differences between what would be permitted at 939 and what could be permitted at this property.
Now, my follow-up question is, I would like to know the timeline to when they could actually reapply, just so, and I want to know that so that it's stated openly, because I'm just still confused about it, and I want to be clear that we're not penalizing people because people don't like where the building is.
I would like to confirm that. Off the top of my head, I'm not aware of that exact timeframe, and I don't want to misquote it.
Okay. Thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you.
Councilman Goodman?
So the first question I have with this is, what was the primary concern from the planning commission when they denied this, this most recent time? Because it's been denied before, if I'm understanding correctly.
It was the location of a grow facility outside the overlay and its adjacency to residential, and compliance with the master plan.
Right. Because when I look through here, I do see the different criteria that is laid out in terms of essentially how this complies or does not comply with the rezoning criteria.
Yes.
And I look through this, and there are essentially only two ways in which this proposed rezoning would fit in with that criteria. And I kind of want to go over some of those with you and ask a couple of questions. So the first one that I see, it asks, you know, is it consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the master plan, or any subarea plans? And then we can see, it says right here, the proposed medical marijuana grow and processor development project is not consistent with the goals and policies and objectives of the city master plan, and there are, how important is it that we do follow that master plan for the most part?
So the master plan does provide solid guidance for how we make our zoning map amendment decisions. So we look at that master plan to determine the long-range vision, and if the proposed zoning map amendments that are being brought to this body and planning commission are in alignment with the long-range vision that the residents have set, or if it is not in line with that plan, and then that gives us additional guidance outside of those rezoning criteria of the permissibility and suitability of a proposed rezoning.
Thank you. So, and like, to further go on that point, if we go down to number four when it comes to the same criteria, it points out that this rezoning would not be compatible with the business services and offices that are kind of already in that area. And then it goes on to point out that, you know, the residential neighborhoods in this area would, could be impacted and, you know, be influenced by the development patterns of this, because again, in changing this to manufacturing, we're altering the area that we're operating in. It can have, it could have an effect on that immediate area, again, especially like the residents who are really just on the other side of, well, essentially lies in between the division of Telegraph.
Yes. And the other side of the alley, yes.
Right. And so, so this is, again, I guess a key example of how like this is not exactly fitting in with what we're supposed to be attempting to do in the area. Do you have anything like to add or to enlighten upon like that?
Just a little, when we did the scheme in 2018 for the zoning, the intention was to allow grow and processing within the overlays. The plan was to isolate that use as much as we could within our given purview and within the request of the residents, and then that would give us time to allow these facilities to open, and we can observe how they operate, the pros and cons they bring, and then use that as best practices and information to decide if we want to allow other areas to have those uses, or if we want to continue with the scheme that we had provided. So just a little background.
Yeah. And like with the, I think one of the things that we're kind of like having to ask the question of is like, obviously, development is good for the city. I am not the person to sit here and say that business development in the city is not an important thing for us to be doing, especially as we try to like bring ourselves forward. But I think it's really important to look at this and then see how this development also affects the residents, because we are elected by them to do the work to protect really their homes. Like, the first and foremost thing is doing what the residents is in their best benefit. And I think that we need to, you know, really prioritize that over, over business, not saying that in, we're doing that in this specific case, but making sure that while we're going through this, we're making sure that the decisions that we're making truly do benefit the businesses. But for right now, I'll stop asking questions in case someone else wants time.
Mayor Grimal, you're next on the speaker's list.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'm, and I obviously don't sit on the planning commission. I don't know what the individuals who do sit on the planning commission, what their rationale was, but I'm surprised to hear that you think the most significant issue or concern that they had was that it sits outside an overlay district, because the planning commission voted, I think unanimously, and city council has previously voted unanimously to approve the West Lawrence grow and processing facility, and that's outside an overlay district as well. So if that's their biggest concern, I don't know why they would have voted to approve that. From the little I saw of the planning commission meeting, and I did not watch the whole planning commission meeting, my sense was that the biggest concern was that there was not a tighter, more succinct timeframe within which the owner would have to actually move forward with the grow and processing facility, and that the timeline that was proposed was too long. And my further understanding is that the owner is now proposing a much shorter timeframe, which is why I thought that you were recommending that we refer it back to the planning commission, because based on the stated concerns, at least of some planning commissioners, that seemed to be a major concern. And rather than simply deny this, if the owner is willing to address that concern, why not send it back to the planning commission so that they can consider whether or not the owner's current position meets their concerns and addresses and resolves their concerns?
Thank you, Mayor. And that would be correct. Additional comments from the commissioners were related to the timeframes that the applicant recommended to allow for site plan approval, construction, and then the completion of the building plans for review. So the changes were to reduce those timeframes to better alleviate some of the concerns of the planning commissioners.
President Protem Carrington?
Thank you, President McGinnis. I guess I want to say, every situation is a different situation. The Lawrence Street situation, he went out into that community and surveyed that whole community, and that whole community came down here to City Hall. They was okay with that facility. There's not one person that's, that stays in, next to the facility, has come down here and said they want this in their neighborhood. That's a big difference. That's, that's a major difference for me. So each situation is different, and I'm not going to put any words in your mouth. You said what you said tonight, so I'm not going to change your words. Okay? So this council need to make a decision tonight. If he wants to bring it back, have him go through the process. It's that simple.
Councilman James for a first time, Councilman Rutherford for a second or third time, Councilman Goodman for a second time.
Also, one of the points that the planner brought up is the fact that they're asking for this zoning change from C1 to an M1, if I'm not mistaken. And I do agree with that, you know, looking at that area, that it probably is not, you know, from my own perspective, not the best idea to move from where we are there to a light manufacturing, you know, considering what's already there, and just the business and the different businesses and operations that are there. I don't think that's the best option to move that, you know, to change that zoning for, for this, for this particular reason. I do think that, I agree with planning, that that would not be the best option, you know, related to our master plan.
Thank you.
I think our master plan is, you know, is good, and I think we should keep it where it is.
Councilman Rutherford?
Okay. Just point of clarity, were there any letters of support given for this particular project?
There were no letters of support given prior to the planning commission meeting, and, and yes, there were no letters of support delivered to planning or to the planning commission.
Were they delivered after?
I have not received any letters of support.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
There were, in the planning commission application, signatures from the 2020, related, related 2020 application, so, and they, they were residents from that neighborhood.
Because that's, I'm staying here.
The, the, as one of the members of the planning commission, my no vote was centered on the large number of years that the conditional rezoning agreement included, and I did not want the property to be in purgatory for years before it ultimately reached its final destination. So that was one point that I in particular made. I can't, the transcript shares some of the perspective of the other planning commissioners, but that was my, my biggest concern. I want our, any conditional agreements, rezoning agreements, to have realistic timeframes so that way the commercial properties, any type of zoning properties, if there's a lot of strings attached, that it's, it's in a timeframe that doesn't tie it up forever and create this further elongated situation. So that was my rationale. I do want to know what the implication is for that period of time, if there's, you know, are we talking 45 days? Are we talking 45 months? That's a big difference. Obviously, the applicant is interested in trying to make accommodations so that way it reflects more closely to what the community would be interested in seeing for the overall rezoning proposal, and so if we deny it now, I would like to know what we're dealing with period of time-wise. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Goodman. I'm sorry, I spoke for a first time. Councilman Goodman for a second time.
You're fine. So to hear the, the point from the administration, sending this back in the, in the case of not agreeing with the time allotted, does nothing to change the fact that it's not in compliance, unless it somehow does. Sending this back solely for that issue does not magically make the, the eight criteria that this doesn't meet magically be fit. So I don't see what sending this back necessarily does unless sending this back will magically make this, the rezoning of this specific parcel in this part of town, in this district. If it magically makes it, for example, the boundaries of the rezoning with the condition is not reasonable in relationship to the residential neighborhoods and does not meet the intended regulations of M1 zoning district, sending it back because of the times, time allowed does not change its location. So with that, I don't, I don't really see much of the logic that's for this, other than we, other than wanting this specific thing to be passed, and this specific thing to be done, which could have a good benefit, but like, I don't see what sending this back does.
Mayor Grimal?
Yeah. It may not change the outcome of the, of the planning commission's recommendation, and we're not lobbying for passage here. We just want to make sure that the planning commission has the current proposal before it. And again, whether the majority of planning commissioners actually voted based on the other criteria or based on the timeline, I can't say. I'm, I'm, I'm not a mind reader. I don't know what each of them thought. But when the owner comes forward with a new proposal, we thought that the most prudent thing to do would be to send it back for consideration by the planning commission based on that new proposal. That's, that's the whole idea here. There have been other instances when proposals have not been in compliance with those eight criteria, and there are other considerations to be taken into account, as has already been expressed, including how neighbors feel. We, I agree with that, that that is a relevant consideration for the planning commission and city council to take into account, and that is something that's not one of those eight criteria. So we agree that other criteria can be assessed and taken into a consideration other than those eight factors, and in fact, the planning commission and the city council have done so in the past with other proposals.
Councilman Nicholson for a second, first time?
The, is it possible for us to table this to later on the agenda so that administration can get us that answer about what the timeframe is if we deny this, what the waiting period is? I think three of us have asked the question.
So you'd like to postpone it?
Yeah, just later in the agenda. Yep. I think that's.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Rutherford.
You have a motion, excuse me, you have a motion on the floor that you've got to deal with that motion first, or I believe the person who moved and supported would have to withdraw in order for.
The motion's still active, and, and the motion is to postpone for three items.
No, no, no. The, the motion was to deny, made by Carrington, supported by Goodman, so they would have to withdraw.
Oh, I think the motion to deny is still active. I'm just saying that there's interest from council members for it to come 30 minutes later, so it'd still be the active motion before us, unless you think that that's not in order.
Right. I think you got to deal, or they would have to withdraw their motion and then put the motion forth to bring it back later in the meeting, since there was already a motion on the floor.
All right. So there is a motion to, for the denial resolution from Protem Carrington, from Councilman Goodman. That motion still stands. They're not withdrawing their motion. Can I ask a question? Yes.
Just because I don't fully remember, who were the three colleagues who asked about the specific waiting time for this? One, two?
I did it.
Council Protem, would you be willing to withdraw your motion?
Actually, I really think we've been debating this too long. I was really ready to call for the vote.
Okay.
For future reference, a motion to postpone for a period of time is in order for an active motion. That would be in order for anything, right? For any, any resolution?
Someone could just leave the room and look up the answer to the question. It would have been helpful.
I could get you a clear answer, if that pleases the board.
Well, my, my problem, President McGinnis, what I could say is that we've been standing here for 30 minutes. They could have simply texted someone and got that answer for us. You know, so I'm not understanding, you know, the delay any longer. Someone out there has to know the time limit. They've been doing this a lot longer than we have.
So.
Thank you. I think Rachel's. Councilman Rutherford.
My question is, do we not do, like, we're just trying to get information. It's called due process. That's what we do. We have due process, and then we make a decision whether the crowd, or, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We're just trying to find out information, because information is freedom, and we have a right to ask it. That's all we're trying to do. We're not trying to delay, Council, I mean, Protem Carrington, we just want to know what's the timeline, and that's a clarity question before we make the vote, sir.
But ultimately, four votes determine the, you know, if there is a motion to do something, whether there's individuals that wish otherwise, we have to carry out the will of the, the motions and the votes that are taken from the council. So I'm just making sure that we're, we're following the, the order. Is there any final discussion while there is a pursuit for a question which may or may not have any impact on somebody's vote? Any final discussion on the motion before us? For the community's benefit, the resolutions that follow are both zoning map amendments as well. Those both came from the planning commission as well, and so those will be their first reading. The zoning map amendment changes do have two readings for it, a change, before a zoning map amendment can be done. Hearing, no further discussion. Is there a motion to recess for one minute?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Goodman, seconded by.
Rutherford.
Roll call on recensing.
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
No.
Five VAs, two NAs.
We stand at recess for one minute?
District two meeting? Was this one? They were brought up just because they're adjacent, and just for their, for the public's information. Surprisingly, this one and the other were overwhelmingly, people were okay with them at the meeting. There was one person who had said they couldn't make the meeting and gave Coleman some feedback, and he expressed that during the meeting, but every, no one at the meeting expressed any issues.
Did they change?
Uh, the mayor. Yeah, yeah, the mayor gave an update. Just, it was just a brief update. Yeah, there was no presentation. There was no formal information. I mean, people understood because they were able to see what was in the council packet, but...
No, I mean, I watched the management. So yeah, I'm aware. I'm not, I'm, I'm not, I just wanted, I don't like not understanding the process to say no. I think it's, especially, we need to have the information, but...
Right. Exactly. Yeah, 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 yeah. So I'm, I'm with you.
I saw...
Let me, let me... Just do it, just do it. Slam the tree.
I was gonna vote.
I don't understand. He's so angry.
You can get red. It's the tone. I didn't, I came out there quietly talking to you. I don't, and that's what I keep telling you. Don't... I said something, I said something quietly. I said something quietly, and you got loud. And you had a loud voice. And since you want to be loud, you said, no, I did say it through my, I showed what y'all doing. That's not a threat. Well, here's the threat. Check it.
I'll see if we can get you that, man.
That very long minute has expired. We are resumed. We have a motion before us continuing the deliberations. Mr. Smith, do you have further information for our consideration? Yes. Thank you, Council President. After reviewing our zoning ordinance, section 6.805 regarding reapplications for rezonings and conditional rezonings... Sorry. I was running a little bit, so I'm a little windy. A new application for the same amendment shall not be accepted by the Planning Commission for consideration for a period of 180 days unless the Planning Commission determines one of the more following conditions are met. One, there is a substantial change in circumstances relevant to the issues or facts considered during the application review period that might reasonably affect the decision-making body's application of the relevant review standards to the development proposed in the application. Two, new or additional information is available that was not available at the time of review that might reasonably affect the decision-making body's application of the relevant review standards to the development. Or three, the new application is materially different from the prior application.
That's helpful. So 180 days, and that's if not these other routes, and there's multiple routes where this application could be considered if, if it's materially changed. Any further discussion on the motion before us? It's the resolution of denial of the zoning map amendment. Hearing, no further discussion. Yes, sir.
So to be clear, if you vote yes, you're voting to deny. A no vote would be not in support of the denial.
Thank you for that. We rarely seek out motions that are a double negative, but so if a council member is voting yes, you are supporting the denial. So yes means denial. And if you vote no, you are opposing the denial, meaning you would want that motion to fail. Thank you for pointing that out, especially when we have these unique circumstances. Hearing, no further discussion. Roll call on adoption of the resolution of denial. Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
No.
Six Y, one A.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the zoning map amendment? ZMA 2208, parcel 64143138021, rezoning from R1, One Family Dwelling District to P1 Parking as requested by the petitioner, Walter Mandu.
So moved.
Support.
It was moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. So that motion is now before us. We give the floor to Mayor Administration for information.
Thank you, President McGinnis. This is a proposal to allow for a rezoning, to allow for a dispensary or provisioning center that did score within the top five for the relevant geographic area in the city, and that therefore received conditional approval for a dispensary license. And to get into, and the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval for this. To get into all of the details, I turn it over to Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. All right. So the first item today, ZMA 2208, let's say for zoning map amendment for the Nature's Remedy Pontiac LLC and the applicant, Walter Mandu, for a medical marijuana provisioning center. The parcel itself is a parcel proposed to be rezoned for parking. It is currently zoned, R1, One Family, and they are proposing to rezone that parcel to P1 to support off-street parking. And then we'll go to the next slide. So for context, there are, your screen shows two parcels, a large parcel, which is the primary parcel where the facility will sit, and then there's a smaller parcel that they are proposing to utilize for parking. The larger parcel is currently zoned properly, so we're not discussing that one. We'll go to the next one. We're actually discussing just the parcel proposed for parking. When we look at our ordinance and, and what justifies or defines the P1 Parking District, the intent of this district is to provide specific locations for public and private off-street parking for those uses which are not able to provide adequate onsite parking or parking within their own boundaries. So the site does have parking, and then this will be additional staff parking. And then there are other criteria related specifically to the P1 District, such as the parking must be an accessory to a primary use, one or more businesses, the parking area used for parking of passenger vehicles for incremental periods of less than one day, so you can't have overnight storage of vehicles. You cannot use the parcel for a commercial auto repair or repair work. You cannot have any excessive signage outside of regulated, regulating sign for entrance and exiting. And then such parking lots shall be situated on the premises which have not less than 5,000 square feet, continuous and adjacent to the property it is intended to serve. So the parcel they are proposing to rezone does meet all of the criteria for the P1 District. So on your right, the yellow parcel outlined in red that the arrow is pointing to is the R1 single-family parcel adjacent, so that'd be just to the east of the pink parcels. That is the single-family parcel they are proposing to rezone to parking. And on the left, you can see where that parcel is in context of a satellite map. It is just south or just east of the alley that runs between Dover Road and Berkeley Avenue. Next slide, please. When we look at the future land use map to determine if a rezoning is appropriate, the future land use category is designated as traditional neighborhood residential, which allow for a long, large range of building styles to replicate Pontiac's traditional neighborhood development pattern. The zoning map amendment is generally consistent with the master plan and the traditional neighborhood district. Next slide, please. And you can see that here on this plan, again, the yellow indicates the traditional neighborhood residential, and you can see just to the north or the west, the regional commercial, I'm sorry, the neighborhood commercial along Orchard Lake Boulevard, Orchard Lake Road. Next slide, please. So briefly, we mentioned earlier, this property is outside the overlay district, and it is permitted in the C1 District by special exemption in addition to being compliant with the other requirements of the Medical Marijuana Facilities Ordinance. And if you go to the next slide, just to highlight how we permit or what permits these uses, there are five provisioning centers permitted in each overlay district, five in the Caesar Chavez Corridor, five located downtown, and five in the Walton Boulevard Overlay District. And then there are five provisioning centers permitted outside the overlay districts. This would be one of those five permitted outside the district. And then lastly, we do not have limits on Medical Marijuana Grove Processing Secure Transport and Safety Compliance Facilities. Next slide, please. So for reference, this is the adopted map for overlay districts. In this part of town, you can't see the Caesar Chavez and Walton districts, but you can see the downtown district. And then the red star indicates where this facility would be located. Next slide, please. When we look at staff findings, the proposed site would support off-street parking for the adjacent development, what would be Site Plan 22-06. The applicant rezoning request is from R1, One Family to P1 Parking. The master plan identifies the site as traditional neighborhood residential, and this rezoning complements or supports that district. The property is compatible with P1 Parking standards. Any future development, this being the parking lot, appropriate screening, landscaping, will have to comply with city codes and standards and the zoning ordinance itself. The Planning Commission did vote to recommend to City Council for approval of ZMA 22-08 on October 5th of this year. And lastly, most recently, the Zoning Board of Appeals did vote to approve the required rear yard setback for the physical building itself. So those were provided. And next slide, please. When we review zoning map amendments, there are several criteria that we have to review and determine if the rezoning does or does not comply with these criteria. It was identified that all of the listed criteria were in compliance with the rezoning, which is one of the reasons that the Planning Division recommended for approval to Planning Commission. Next slide, please. And I think this might be a couple more. So on September 7th, this project did go before the Planning Commission for preliminary site plan approval. It was approved at that time with the following conditions. One, that they relocate their transformer, which was located on this P1 parcel. They relocate this to the primary parcel on the other side of the alley. All signs must comply with the zoning ordinance for ground signs, building signs, and comply with the clear vision criteria. They must provide the calculation of compliance for design standards. These are related to building materials and are 60/40 accessory and primary materials. The P1 Parking District is required for non-residential off-street parking. So a denial of this, they would not be able to utilize this parcel for parking. It would remain R1. The, this parcel and the primary parcel must comply with the right-of-way buffering and landscaping requirements. So this is at Orchard Lake itself, along Dover, and adjacent to those residential homes. The parking plan must comply with those buffering and landscaping requirements. The site itself and the site plan must be reviewed and approved by the Engineering and Department of Public Works. And lastly, they are proposing to vacate a portion of city right-of-way to make sidewalk improvements. There is a kind of jog related to that sidewalk. They want to vacate a portion of that, move it over, and make the sidewalk straight. So that requires some surveys and a potential vacation, and if that goes forward, that would be another item that will come before this body. So all of these were the conditions for site plan approval, so they are working through these items. Next slide, please. The applicant did provide some renderings. This is not their first facility. The facility on the left, or the image on the left, is a current operation that is in Ferndale. The rendering on the right is a image of what this facility would look like. So this is just for your reference. The Planning Commission did review these items as a part of their site plan review. Next slide, please. Again, renderings and elevations were provided, and they should also be in your packets. And there's one more slide, just of the other elevations. Again, we have reviewed these items with the Planning Commission and against our zoning ordinance. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. The Planning Commission recommended approval, and as identified, there were many points, maybe all of them, in which there was compliance with those zoning items. Any discussion? Councilwoman James?
Yeah, what he showed was not, it wasn't in our packet. Unless I'm missing it. I don't see it.
The elevations?
Yeah, the, the...
Elevation, okay.
Design drawings that you just showed.
They were, okay.
So this is our first of two readings. So in advance of next week's reading, those materials that were in the Planning Commission packet, we request that that be provided further. Obviously, there is a great deal of information here, but we request the visuals that were shown as well.
That is not a problem. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this first reading? Hearing, no further discussion. This will be back for a second reading next week. We are now at item number eight. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve zoning map amendment? ZMA 22-09 for 529 East Walton Boulevard, parcel 6414937715, 1617, and 641409377028, rezoning from R1, One Family Dwelling District to C3 Quarter Commercial as requested by the petitioner, Steve Robinson.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman James. Motion is now before us, and Mayor Administration, the floor is yours for information.
This, too, is a proposal to provide conditional rezoning for a dispensary or provisioning center. The same basic outline of facts is the case here, as was on the last agenda item, in that it was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, and I'll allow Mr. Smith to get into more details.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. This item, ZMA 22-09, is a zoning map amendment. The intersection is located at Walton Boulevard and Jocelyn. The address, also known as 529 East Walton, again, is a proposed rezoning for a provisioning center to go from R1, One Family Dwelling to C3 Corridor Commercial.
Hearing no further discussion, this will be back for a second reading next week. We are now at item number eight. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve zoning map amendment, ZMA 22-09 for 529 East Walton Boulevard, Parcel 6414937715, 1617, and 641409377028, rezoning from R1 One Family Dwelling District to C3 Quarter Commercial as requested by the petitioner, Steve Robinson?
Some of?
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman James. Motion is now before us, and Mayor Administration, the floor is yours for information.
This, too, is a proposal to provide conditional rezoning for a dispensary or provisioning center. The same basic outline of facts is the case here, as was on the last agenda item, in that it was recommended for approval by the planning commission, and I'll allow Mr. Smith to get into more details.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. This item, ZMA 22-09, is a zoning map amendment. The intersection is located at Walton Boulevard and Jocelyn. The address, also known as 529 East Walton, again, is a proposed rezoning for a provisioning center to go from R1 One Family Dwelling to C3 Corridor Commercial. So on the screen here is just contextually where this property is located. It is at the northwest intersection of East Walton and Jocelyn Avenue. Next slide, please. Just some context on the C3 Corridor Commercial District. This district is designed to provide for a mixture of uses that are appropriate along thoroughfare and collector's streets that have moderate to large traffic volumes. A wide range of uses are appropriate within this context, including retail and service, commercial office, and low-impact light industrial uses. It is expected that most customers of establishments in this district will travel via automobile, and there is light, little essential interdependence of activities. Each establishment typically will have its own automobile parking area. So on your screen, there are, the rezoning consists of four parcels, and those four are indicated by the four stars. On the right side of the screen, you can see the red square, and there are 1, 2, 3, 4 yellow parcels within that boundary. The red you see more closely at the intersection of East Walton and Jocelyn are currently zoned C3. So the facility can operate at that current property. The areas that we actually are rezoning are proposed for landscaping and water retention and parking. So we'll see that on the next slide. When we look at the future land use, the area is designated neighborhood commercial and is intended for smaller-scale commercial development that is designed to serve the needs of the surrounding community. The site designed of neighborhood commercial areas and project needs to enhance the pedestrian experience by creating human-scale places. The zoning map amendment is consistent with the requirements found within this district. And next slide. So the area that is now outlined is the area of the master plan. So all of those proposed parcels share the same future designation. However, currently, some are zoned residential and some are zoned commercial. So this rezoning actually brings all of the associated parcels into complete compliance with the future land use plan, which is why we are recommending that this item be rezoned to C3 and decided to not allow it to stay residential. Next slide, please. So briefly, again, when we look at our medical marijuana overlay district, this property is located inside of the Walton Boulevard overlay. Inside this overlay, provisioning centers are permitted by right. So this provisioning center would be one of those five. Next slide, please. This provisioning center would be one of the five provisioning centers permitted within the Walton Boulevard overlay. So it does comply with the overlay district of our ordinance. Next slide, please. Contextually, you can see that is the overlay district for Walton Boulevard, and the red star indicates that intersection, and it is located inside the district. Next slide, please. So when we look at our staff findings, the proposed rezoning supports the proposed use and is in compliant. The applicant does own all of the residential property, and there are two homes that exist on two of those properties. As the owner, he is also proposing to demolish those homes to further allow this development. The applicant resists the rezon, requests the rezoning of the subject site from R1 One Family to C3 Corridor Commercial. The master plan identifies the site as neighborhood commercial, and the proposed zoning designation complements the future land use plan and designation for this area. The subject property is compatible with C3 Corridor Commercial standards. Any future development must comply with city standards, codes, ordinances, and procedures. And lastly, the planning commission did vote to recommend to city council for approval of the zoning map amendment, ZMA 22-09, on October 5th of this year. Next slide? Yep. So looking at the zoning map amendment criteria, Section 6.804 of the ordinance, this proposed rezoning does comply with those criteria, and we did go over those items with the planning commission. Next slide, please. On September 5th, similar to the last project, this project also received a preliminary site plan approval. Those conditions are as follows. Acquiring the necessary zoning map amendment from the planning commission and city council. They must resubmit their site plan for technical review based on the comments provided in that technical report, Water for Fire Department report, City Department of Public Works and Engineering Report, and the preliminary site plan review report. And then lastly, this item or the site plan itself will have to go back to the planning commission for final site plan approval. Next slide. So for context, those parcels that I mentioned were currently zoned C3 and do not need to be rezoned are the two in the bottom left, so the parcels not outlined in red are currently zoned appropriately. Those parcels within that boundary are zoned residential and are proposed to be rezoned from R1 to C3. So to the left, the long vertical parcel residential has a current home that is proposed to be demolished and would be rezoned to C3. The parcel immediately to the north is proposed to be used for retention area to support the new development. That is proposed to be rezoned from R1 to C3. And the parking area between the retention pond and the building itself is currently zoned residential. There is a current home on that property, and the applicant is proposing to demolish that home to complete this new construction project. Next slide. The applicant did provide site planning and landscaping. The proposed landscape does meet the landscaping requirements, so this plan is in compliance with the zoning ordinance and landscaping requirements. Next slide, please. And that completes the presentation.
Thank you. And again, this is the first of two readings. This will be back before us for ultimate consideration next week, and we echo the same request that those additional aerial and topographical and landscaping images be included with the information that has already been provided as well. Any discussion on this first reading? As Councilwoman James shared, the two corner parcels that are currently already zoned commercial, that has, very recently been demolished. It was the long vacant gas station. The intersection in question, it's Jocelyn and Walton, so the northwest corner of Jocelyn and Walton for the community's frame of reference.
Yes, thank.
Councilwoman James, you have the floor.
They've already done a service to the community just in removing blight, probably one of the worst incidents of blight that we have in District 4. So the, the building of these provisional centers is really providing us with, it's helping us to alleviate blight and giving some opportunity to that area for a new business opportunity.
Any further discussion?
I just may add, as it relates to the scheme we put together, this was or is one of the objectives of that ordinance as we designed it, to address some of those either vacant, dilapidated, or blighted properties, in hopes that these potential users will come, develop them, rehab, rehabilit them, and then bring them back online and improve that area. So this does meet the overall objective of the plan we put together in 2018.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion. That concludes this speaker's list, and it will be revisited at next week's city council meeting for a second reading. We now move to an item of, a motion that was postponed from last week. It's the resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the city and school district for after-school youth recreation activities in Pontiac's elementary schools. Want to give the floor to Mayor Grimal for latest update.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I thought we had all of this sorted out between the district and the city, but just yesterday afternoon, the school district raised a new concern reportedly from their attorney, from the school district's attorney. That was a surprise, but I know that tomorrow, the city's attorney, Chris Trubilcock from Clark Hill, is talking with the school district's attorney, and our hope is that they can sort this out, because they seem to have a difference of opinion about what's legally required. So my hope is that in the next couple days, that issue will be resolved, and no new issues will come up, and we'll be in a position to move forward next week.
Is there a motion to postpone for one week?
Moved by Carrington.
It's been moved by President Protem Carrington and seconded by Councilman Parker that this item be postponed or tabled for one week, and it will return to the council agenda at the November 1st city council meeting. On the motion to, for kick the can for one week, discussion?
I just want to understand, what was, did they give a rea, I'm sorry, did they?
Give a reason why they didn't, why they chose not to vote? Because I was under the impression by some on this, that it was moving along smoothly, so I'm just a little concerned with how it's going, because this is the second time this is an issue. So did they give a reason why they didn't want to vote?
Mayor Grimal?
The short answer is yes, but I'm not sure I fully understand the reason. The way that the most recent draft read was that both the school district and the city would perform background checks, and there seemed to be some concern on the part of the school district's attorney as to whether or not that language was adequate under the revised school code. So I don't really understand the stated legal concern, but that was the crux of the concern, was whether the language in the agreement regarding the performance of background checks on people who would be working at the school in connection with youth recreation was adequate language.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to postpone? Councilwoman James?
I just would like to say that, uh, yes. I'd like to say that, you know, hiccups do come up, but I think that this is one of the most exciting things that we have done as a council, to finally see our city government and our school district coming together and working on common programs. So I'm sure that we will be able to work out and work through the difficulties, and that we will be able, that this will be just the start of really seeing our city and our, and our school district come together, because this is, this is resident, this is our money. We fund the school district, we fund the city. And, you know, when we're working in two different camps, we're not really giving the residents what they deserve. So I am very happy to see us work through these problems, but the result is going to be wonderful for the children of Pontiac and for the city of Pontiac. So just want to make that point.
Any further discussion on the motion before us, which is tabling or postponing to next week's city council meeting? Hearing no further discussion. Roll call on adoption of the motion to postpone for one week.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Deppman?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Seven A's, no names.
The motion carries. This will be before us next week. We are now at public comment. President Protem Carrington.
Oh, yes, thank you, President McGinnis. Do we have, it says L. Smith? That person is not here? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Bass, president of Community Citizen District Council, and members, my members and supporters, some of them are here. Would you please stand? Thank you. Okay. We are here this evening because over the past few weeks, it's become to my attention that our councilperson and other elected officials have been spreading the narrative that our citizen district council is not a legal organization, and in our district, we have been blocked from talking to developers. We are requesting that this method of trying to damage my credibility and the legitimacy of the Community Citizen District Council stop or prove your point. We are self-governing by a group of residents actively engaged in regular communication with resident leaders, block clubs, association, businesses, and community leaders, such as our city councilperson and mayor. We are a community citizen district council in District 1, a nonprofit charitable organization, and we are operating within the guidelines set forth by the Community Development Division, Pontiac City Council, City Code, Citizen Participation Act, Michigan Compiled Law for CDCs, Pontiac City Charter, and the Open Meetings Act. Our major focus is on community development, economic development, and redevelopment in our district area and community. We have asked for, all we have asked for is inclusion, to be heard and respected, to be allowed to receive timely information regarding developments coming in our area. And lastly, please remember, all of you are, were elected to work with us, not around us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Pastor Lester?
Mango.
Mango, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's like a man and a piece of chewing gum. Man gum. Amen. It's been a long evening here. Councilor President McGinnis, I'm here on behalf of St. John Church, and the members of St. John Church want to thank you for being our district leader. And we have, we know that you're going to be paying close attention to the, the corner where McDonald's and Featherstone is, those Amazon trucks, and all those other, the heavy, heavy-loaded trucks that just busting through there, you know, rapidly. But our members are content to know that we're represented by you, so we're cool. You know, we know that you're the best. We thank you. I'm also here on behalf of St. John to thank the mayor in particular. Mayor Grimal, we thank you so much for honoring us on our 100th anniversary. It was a true pleasure. I won't get into details of what you did for us, because you might not be able to do for everybody. Thank you, just last week, my brother Parker, fellow pastor, invited me in to do prayer. I'm new to Pontiac. I only have nine years in the belt, you know, and Pontiac, that don't mean much, you know? Nine years is really just, you know, a new kid on the block. But I want to tell you, Pontiac residents, that I love you all, in the name of Jesus. And Pontiac is a beautiful place, beautiful place, and I didn't pay respect to Deputy Mayor and, and our, there, Ms. Sharp, and our clerk, and I just want to say I love you all, in the name of Jesus. And I just want to say to all the council persons and our mayor, that we fight not against flesh and blood, but against powers and principalities. Evil is real. Evil is real, and we, you know, if I had, you know, I've never had a member of the church get mad at me because they went in the hospital and things didn't turn out the way I prayed, you know? But you guys, mm-mm-mm. When something doesn't turn out right, in a way that's supposed to happen, you get tomatoes thrown in your face, and that's not cool all the time. But we understand, you guys know where we coming from and, you know, how we feel, but just, we just need to get the best people in the job. We have that. Be passionate. You are passionate. You are caring. I just want to be supportive and make a supportive speech towards you and say, I pray for you all the time. Our congregation has you on our prayer list. God bless you.
Well, thank you, sir. Mr. Bill Maxey? Mr. Bill Maxey?
Good evening, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac Governors. Three things tonight, focus, community activists. I hope you are listening to Ms. Patrice Waterman. She had, she stated what she had to say in two minutes and two tenths of a second. Our neighborhood, what we don't want, we have been in that neighborhood for years, homeowners standing on whose shoulder, but believe me when I tell you, the, the zoning and the discussion, the do's and don'ts was not told to us. I don't know why, when I say us, we the homeowners, you cannot have omission. Omission, you receive no information, so that's why most of them adamant about what's going on. The only information that we have is when our team, Bass and I, went to the planning commission and found out what was what, otherwise than that, we did not know. And that's the problem. When I, a district person, whatever, don't tell you, you could guess, you can have all kind of wild guesses. Give us information. Enough of that, again, I appreciate, Ms. Waterman, what you said, I really appreciate it because I know your integrity and your forth righteousness and moving forward. Quickly, Angela Power came before us last week as a community development, community leader, might have the title, not correct, but councilperson. How many of you have this package? How many of you in your district that your people understand you either opt out or you sign? Because I don't have any faith in it, we don't, our committee is setting up at the Bowen Center to have the legal, people come down and talk to our seniors. How many of you think can navigate through this? They need legal advice. If you're not doing it, no problem, we'll do it ourselves. Last but not least, this is what we're faced with, service to our community. Service, it seem to be an omission. I'm interested in finding out when we do open the doors and hopefully, we're going to get with the mayor's people on Monday or Friday, we're going to have a focus and, and to you, Mr. Chairperson, Mesack, which is the leader in this community, whether accepted or not, Michigan Senior Advisory Council, we're on top of our game, we will serve the seniors. And I'll get with the mayor's people to find out, you know, can we meet at the Bowen Center all the time between noon so we can explain the mileage, what's in this package, what's going on? We need information and as long as I'm here and I could team up with my counterpart, Mr. Bass, on inquiries, that's why we are far ahead in District One, because of inquiries.
That does conclude-
Amen, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Years were listening.
Ms. Florence Etifia?
Greetings, everyone. The meeting started wonderfully, it was a joy that Mr. Styles freed after 25 years and innocent. I love that, a great way to start the meeting. And I'm going to cut it short, I visited at the Pontiac Public Library and it was wonderful, the theme, the theme is like feudal, a castle and the knights, wonderful theme, but I looked at the computers, the computers must be 25 years old. I don't think they've been changed since Hubert Price and Evelyn Floretta, Killian Duffy, Le Duffe, was there and, but there were people there, they have tutoring, children were being tutored, counseled, but I don't know why they don't have any updated computers and other kinds of things. I visited the Auburn Hills Library and you wouldn't believe all the things that they have there, everything, all updated. I mean, you can even get seeds there and herbs and plant them. I mean, Pontiac has a lot of work to do, we have wonderful people to do the job, but you're going to have to work really hard because there's a lot of hard work and keep at it, it's getting good. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cassandra Thomas?
Good evening, everyone, thank you for having me today. My name is Cassandra Thomas, I am a proud Pontiac community member, I am a product of Pontiac Northern High School a couple of years ago. I'm coming to you today, I'm a clinical psychologist and I wanted to share information about a teen workshop that I will be beginning, that I am hosting, beginning November 10th, I have flyers available for that. The idea of the teen workshop is to meet the need of the children in our community, to really reach out and help normalize what mental health support looks like, what support overall looks like, and what we can do to normalize those things and bring them to our community in a way that the kids can understand and relate to. So some of the topics that we will discuss are intros into mental health support, financing, financing and budgeting, navigating relationships, and healthy communication with adults. So I just wanted to introduce that workshop that I'm bringing to the community and hopefully have support from you all with that. I have flyers available for that and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Deidre Waterman?
I'd just like to start by piggybacking on what Mr. Robert Bass was talking about in District One, representatives who are here in terms of their CDC for District One. And just to emphasize that community building was part of what we want to do as a community and very much important to me as when I was mayor. And the CDC stands for Citizen District Council. It's actually citizens who form these councils, they've had their bylaws, they have their plans, and they elect their officers. The council members are supposed to be supportive of that, not in competition with it and not ignoring them, so I'd just like to bring that out. I know in some districts, their council people have to kind of breathe life because you don't have that many active people, but that's not true in a district such as District One or our district, District Two, where you have a huge preponderance of people come out who want to be part of their community building. I think there's a little difference here in the way the money was distributed to the districts this year. When I did it, I did the, what we call the Neighborhood Empowering Projects, and that was what we gave money to each district and the district came up with the projects they wanted to do and that's how the money was spent. This year, I understand the money was given to each individual councilperson and if the councilperson was not working in concert with their district, then actually it just serves as a slush money for the councilperson. So that's what the difference is and I think that's what they're trying to enforce. But I'm saying that some of the councilpeople do work their districts, that's great, it's not to all of you, but I think District One, well, that was their complaint and I think that needs to be worked through. But what I really did come was to follow up on the questions we had about the finance department, what was going on? I think last week I said, you know, there's some, who's running our finance department and some cracks in that because when we heard that there had been a lapse of payroll several months ago, and then I guess the answer came back that we had a bad payroll firm, and I thought, well, I worked with that same payroll firm for two years and we never missed a payroll for our employees, you just don't do that, you pay your people. So I just wanted to report that that was a little disingenuous and you have to not pass the buck. But then the other hand, who was handling our accounting? I heard the mayor say we did have an accounting firm, they're nameless, and if we do have an accounting firm, how come that contract hasn't come before you, council? Wasn't that one of the things he complained about my administration on? So that's a question and while I'm at it, there's staff here who want, they don't seem to know why Gil Garrett is here. What is his role, what is his title, who's paying him? He seems to have full-time status here, he has access to everywhere, places I didn't even have, but have as mayor, and he seems to have some, at least in one case that I know, personnel matters. And the finance director, the HR director who was fired before called me the night she was fired and said she was fired the day after she complained about-
Your time-
unauthorized people having access to confidential personnel files.
Your time is expired.
Ms. Darlene Clark?
Good afternoon, residents. Again, I had something else to speak about, but I want to speak about District One to confirm my district people, and these are the people that actually helped raise me, they helped feed me and they really have put me on a timeout on many a days. Now District One, as they say, is a very good district. It's the district that we take so much pride in, it's almost like it's our body and our soul, that's to show you and, and how we raised our kids on District One on the South Side. Now we may not speak to each other, we get mad at each other, but one thing, when the crap is all said and done, we come together as one, okay? So remember, when I'm finna say to you guys, I'm talking as a resident. Today I had a visit at my home and everyone in District One, District Two, Three, Four, and Seven, anybody to sound my voice, Noah Clark, and I'm one of them, I'm one of them twins, and you know our conditions and how our standard of living and what we want for everyone else. And not only do we have our families looking upon us, we have our community looking at us. And when we don't take care of our houses, we don't take care of our neighborhood, and we make too much noise, it's going to infringe on somebody else's right, guess who's knocking on our door, talking to us, to our face? We call that our neighborhood District One. Am I right? Am I right, District One? No problem said. So today, I had a problem, says that I had two code enforcement knock on my door, 9:40 in the morning. Now check this out, District One, y'all know me, right? Y'all know I take good pride. Two code enforcements knocked on my door because I had a pot in my yard and the pot in my yard, they told me I couldn't store it there. Now, the bottom land that has not stored it there, I asked them to look it and I told them I don't own that. I says, look at the phone number on there, I said, I haven't broke any charter laws, there's no one, the charter said I couldn't have storage on, you know, for my, my, it's not a permanent fixture, I didn't, I can drive it there at my discretion and pull it out at my discretion. And I do not infringe on District One Nebraska Street neighborhood, you know why? Because I got two driveways. You get what I'm saying to you? I have a circular driveway, I have a 4,000 square foot house, seven bedrooms, that was inherited to me by my family who my father helped build Pontiac. And for 60 plus, is it 60, hey, come on rights, come on glory, did they stay there for 60 years? Oh, late 1940s, they purchased that land and they lived there all the way up until the day they died, and that's in 2014, 15, and 16. So that tells me they got a whole lot of stuff in that house, but guess who has to go through it? Did I, did I stutter you guys? It's called inheriting property. So next time code enforcement knock on my door, make sure you got your facts right, Tim Grimal, Mike Wilson, at District One Council.
Well, thank you. Ms. Gloria Miller?
Good evening, everyone, good evening, Pontiac. I just told my cousin, why do I have to be bare by bad news when I come? Because I usually don't come, that's my residents is calling me. Now I'm going to say something tonight, I'm not going to make a lot of friends, I never do, but I don't come down here to make friends, I just come to speak the truth to my resident. For the ones out there in the city of Pontiac that know me, you know my heart, it's embedded in the city of Pontiac. And when you mess with one of my resident, you got a fight on your hand. You got a fight on your hand. Now we don't have the resident, we don't have the buildup that you got, but you know what? Pontiac is home to me. It's home to me. And when I see it's messed up, I'll attack anybody up in here and I'll take it because I'm a man, I don't need no one to protect me. So remember that when you come at me, nothing stops me, my husband can't stop me, nobody. That's the way I was raised, I'm my own woman. Now what I'm about to say to you, Councilman Parker, one of the reasons I'm down here, I waited a week because I wanted to make sure. I left you a message about a resident and truthfully, you took care of it, I appreciate you. But what you did was you left a disaster when you went over and spoke to the people. So what they do, they call me, that's how I got involved in it. I do not try to step on your realm, I do not want your job, I'm enjoying life, I'm living every day, but just doing what I want to do. When they call me, they know I'm coming to their rescue because I'm always a councilperson, no matter whether I'm up there. It don't mean that just because you up there, I'm always going to be dedicated to the city of Pontiac, long as I live here, and they know this. So they called me, so I called you, trying to get a call back, I even called Councilman Carrington, asked you to give me my phone number. I reached out to Ollie Brandt, now I'm going to be honest, I ain't going to reach no more, that's not how I'm built, I only go once. And with that being said, you left a disaster, those people were in danger over there for some of the things that you had spoken with the person that you went over there, and it was a lot going on. Thankfully, hopefully, code enforcement got it together. I hope so, because right now, they don't have good feelings for you. You left them. Being on that diocese is a big responsibility, I didn't know it till I got off of it, but it's embedded in me to take care of my resident when they called me. And you really let them down because you didn't call me back, put your pride away, maybe we don't get along like great, I don't really know you that well, to be honest. But it's about the people for me, that's all it is. Now I also want to say one more thing about this gurz, and I want to get this out real quick. I was at the courthouse in the federal court when this VIBA thing came down, I want to speak to everybody out in TV land that know me, know that I'm going to tell you the truth. I was in the courtroom and I want to mention one quote that the super attorney said to the judge, Judge Lawson, he said that gurz in, the city of Pontiac is embedded with one another and they only wants to do another audit because the one that they gave them is not looking correct and they only ask for an independent audit. That's all they wanted, we wouldn't be here. And I'm going to keep speaking on it, I get more time next week, I'm going to tell the truth, what's going on in this city. Y'all love me, I was right last time, you see what happened?
It does conclude your time.
Watch me this time.
Thank you. Mr. Chuck Johnson?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those of you here in the audience and those of you at home watching by television. The comment I was going to make tonight, I'm going to step away from it, I want to go to Councilman Parker's defense in a certain manner as it related to the document, the contract that was going to be awarded. And he had the question of, of sanding that was in your packet or whatever and clarity wasn't made. However, I want to go to his defense as well because when you saw cut is when you saw cut. Now if you don't know what saw cutting is, it's when you take a mechanical saw and you trim or cut something, but in order to make it completely level, you have to sand it. And if you don't sand it, you're going to have sharp edges. That's what I think that Councilman Parker was alluding to. But I also want to go to the defense of, of Mr. Cooley because I think he just, and I don't want to put words in his mouth and I want to take words out, I think he wanted to say that there was in the packet, the sanding part, because I know for a fact that I've watched him do the sanding. Because when he made the comment about grinding and the dirt and the dust would go back into a bag, you're not saw cutting, you're sanding. So in defense for Mr. Cooley, he just probably, he, he could have corrected it, but I guess he was trapped in a certain way because the council was kind of ready to make their move. But you should have gave Mr. Parker, Councilman Parker, a better opportunity to bring it back if it needed to be or find a way to get better clarity, even if you had to bring Mr. Cooley back up here and have him go over it and if he, if he made a overstatement or didn't make the comment correctly, then maybe you would have accepted his change of, change of mind. But saw cutting and sanding is two different things. And if anyone wants to see some sanding, when you go out that door downstairs- And if anyone wants to see some sanding, when you go out that door downstairs, as you walk and approach the parking lot, you'll see the edge of the concrete right there has been sanded. It was saw cut first, then it was sanded to take away the abrupt step, or toe kicker, as we call it sometimes. So, Councilman Parker, you was right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Sanya May? Ms. Pastor Kathy DeZerel?
I have four things, so I'm gonna hurry through them. Number one, I made a sweeping statement last week about not being able to get anybody to answer the phones in this building. That's not true of the clerk's office. They always answer the phone. Number two, the grinding, sanding, whatever you call it, I am permanently disabled because of a really crummy job that was done by a contracting company in another city in Oakland County. But they didn't sand it down properly, and I stuck on it and tripped, and I metal from my shoulder to my ankle on one side because of it. Make sure that the people that are doing this know what they're doing, because it can be just as bad done badly as to not do it at all. Number three, who bought the truck terminal on Perry that are doing this marvelous redo over there? They've torn up all that horrible parking lot, they've painted the building, they're getting ready to pave. I mean, I can't believe how wonderful it's going to be. Now, I have that eyesore sitting there, but we don't know who it is, my people are asking who it is. And number four, my, my song for October, you're gonna get tired of hearing it. I ran a cancer support group for a long time. I am a cancer survivor, two times. And getting men to understand cancer is not a woman's disease is really important. Cancer is universal. Children, men, everybody gets cancer. One of my meetings, we had a group from Beaumont come up, and it was directed at men, and do you think we could get men to come? The only men that came were the husbands of the wives who were already active. And guess what? One of them had his life saved because he came. Because the doctor that spoke mentioned something that he didn't think was a symptom. And he was in rough shape, and he had the surgery, and he's alive today. And I'm telling you guys, don't be ashamed to go to the doctor and make sure that your symptoms aren't cancer. Thanks.
President McGinnis, thank you. President McGinnis, that concludes public comment.
Thank you, President Protem Carrington, and thank you to the community members who made the time to be here tonight. We're now at City Council Communications. The Pontiac City Council has recognized October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. The City Council has likewise recognized October 24th as the Diwali Festival of Light. So we're wishing a happy and blessed Diwali to those of the Hindu faith in our community. Many Pontiac residents and approximately 70 million Americans will see an 8.7% increase in their social security benefits and supplemental security income, or SSI payments, in 2023. Those benefits will increase, on average, by more than $140 per month, starting in January. So we encourage our community members to learn more about the benefits. And if you aren't getting benefits and you may be eligible, please contact our member of Congress or U.S. Senator's Office, so you get all of the benefits that you are entitled to. The Pontiac School District is hiring for multiple full-time positions. Bus drivers, $24 to $28 per hour. Police authority officers, $18.29 to $27.38 per hour. Full-time with benefits. Building substitute teachers, $175 per day, full-time with benefits, and $200 a day for long-term subs. Part-time position building helpers, $11.45 to $14.09 per hour, 20 hours per week, part-time. Oakland County and Pontiac Community Foundation are now accepting grant applications for the Healthy Food Access Grant Program. Up to $50,000 available for eligible organizations to help feed struggling Pontiac and Oakland County residents. Thankful Hearts Animal Annual Collection Drive for Coats and Toys is underway. You can contact Ruth Montague at 248-563-3191 for info, including how to donate. Oak Hill Cemetery, the managing entity, wants the community to know that Oak Hill Cemetery's new section, as well as Ottawa Park Cemetery, which is city property, that their gates will be closing on Sundays at 5:00 PM. So the gates will be closed and locked on Sundays, starting at 5:00 PM, for the new section specifically, for Oak Hill Cemetery as well, as well as all of Ottawa Park. The Sheriff's Office and Deputies for Kids has their 11th Annual Angels Night and Trunk or Treat, October 26th, 5:00 to 7:00, at Aaron Perry Park. Elf Magic Fundraiser for the Holiday Extravaganza Parade, October 27th, 5:00 to 9:00 PM, Sharks Club, Waterford, holidayextravaganza.org. The Charter Revision Commission will hold its first listening session on October 27th at 6:00 PM, held here in the City Hall Council Chambers at Pontiac City Hall. Again, October 27th, 6:00 PM. Super Marimba Concert, a free concert, October 28th, 7:30 PM, held at Pontiac's Little Art Theater or the Platt, 47 North Saginaw Downtown. The final round of the Oakland County Treasurer Land Auction is October 28th. It's online at tax-sale.info, that's the website. You can get more information, as well as how to bid, if you are interested in parcels that have not sold in the previous round, including here in Pontiac. Grave blankets for our city cemeteries are on sale, starting October 28th. You can call 248-623-7705 for more information. Again, grave blankets, 248-623-7705. Past years, purchasers of grave blankets got a mailer, but that's an opportunity for all community members for those gravesites in our city cemeteries. The Oakland University Pontiac Initiative Town Hall Meeting, October 29th, held at OU's Oakland Center. Pontiac Creative Arts Center has their Community Drum Circle, free admission, October 29th, 11:00 AM. The Creative Arts Center is 47 Williams Street. The Pontiac Farmers Market has their Healthy Halloween at the Oakland History Center, October 30th, 1:00 to 4:00 PM. 405 Caesar Chavez is where the history center is located. Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford presents Trick or Treat for District One, October 30th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, held at 456 Alton Street in Pontiac. Eat Community Outreach Services Trunk or Treat, October 30th, 5:00 to 8:00, held at UWM Sports Complex, South Boulevard East. Oakland County Water Resources Commission has resources available for Pontiac residents to assist with water bills. You can call 248-983-5656 for those that need those resources. Pontiac Knight Riders Motorcycle Club, Free Annual Kitty Spooky Party, October 31st, 6:00 to 8:00, 9:00 PM, 339 Rayburn in Pontiac. Bishop Murphy and First Lady Murphy are having their Harvest Festival on October 31st, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, 313 East Walton Boulevard in Pontiac. The Fran Anderson Making a Difference Scholarship Essay Competition deadline is November 1st, at 12:00 PM. Pontiac students can earn a thousand, ugh, $1,000 scholarship. And that concludes the announcements between this meeting and next meeting. More can be found on the end of the, of the council agenda. We now turn to the Mayor's Office for Mayor's Office Communications.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to begin just by addressing a couple of issues that were brought up by members of the public.
We're at communications, then it transitions.
Ah, yes, of course. Let's start with communications, then. Just a handful of communications. First of all, as I've done in the past, we do have a great offering of youth recreation and youth enrichment programs this fall. Please have your kids, or grandkids, or neighbors, or friends' kids enroll in those programs. They can do so online at pontiacrecreation.reckdesk.com. Also, we have a great family fun event occurring this coming Saturday, October 29th, right here at City Hall on the front lawn, between City Hall and Woodward. That, again, is going to be this Saturday, October 29th, from 1:00 to 5:00 PM. That is our Pontiac Harvest Festival and Family Fun Day. So please come on out this Saturday, 1:00 to 5:00 PM. And the last communications item that I have is that there is a Economic Development Stakeholder Survey going on currently in collaboration between the city and a nonprofit activist group. You can find that survey on the city's website. So please, go online and complete that survey. There is no more important stakeholder in our city on economic development issues and every other issue than our residents. So please, as residents, go online, fill out that Economic Development Stakeholder Survey, so that we will make sure that we're getting responses that represent the full spectrum and diversity of our community. Thanks.
With that, Mayor Grimal, your closing comments.
Yeah, thank you. Again, so now I'll, I'll try to address a couple of concerns that were expressed by residents. One is, I know that one resident brought up a concern or suggestions regarding a CDC. He and I have always worked closely, I've said many times publicly and privately how appreciative I am of his community leadership. And I have, on more than one occasion, referred developers to specifically meet with him and his CDC, and have always done so, and certainly will continue to do so. So I respect his leadership, as I do the leadership of so many leaders of neighborhood and community organizations, including CDCs. In addition, I learned of the storage unit in the resident's yard just this morning, when the resident with the storage unit in the yard contacted me about it. I don't know what the city ordinance says about storage units in yards, but I have directed our code enforcement manager to find out. The resident was not given a citation about it, but I know that a code enforcement officer talked with her about it and to try to learn more about the situation. Again, we've asked our code enforcement manager to look into the situation, and we'll certainly be getting back in touch with that resident as well. And then finally, I do just want to note that earlier this month, City Council passed a resolution recognizing Diwali as an official holiday here in the city. And I do want to note that yesterday was Diwali. Diwali is a Hindu holiday, commonly called the Festival of Lights. And it really is something that reflects, I think, universal values that, that we hold as Christians and that every religion holds dear, and that is the triumph of good over evil, the triumph of light over dark, and the triumph of knowledge over ignorance. So I think that's a really important message for all of us to hold dear throughout the entire year.
Thank you. We do have a deputy mayor closing comments, and then we'll go to the city clerk. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Just very briefly, tomorrow, you will find on the city's website an informational, it'll actually be in the form of a PDF, but an informational PowerPoint about the Headley Amendment. There is a question on the ballot about doing a Headley Amendment override. And then next week will be the last week before the in-person voting, which I'm sure our clerk is gonna tell you about. But next week, I will actually do a full-blown presentation about the Headley Amendment, so those of you who have not early voted will get it. But some of you are early voting, so I did just want to just very, very briefly make sure that you are aware that tomorrow, the full presentation will be available on the website. And also, just to iterate that the Headley Amendment is an amendment that was passed in 1978 that basically says, whatever taxes a city collected at the beginning of a period, they are only allowed to collect that much money in taxes, plus whatever the rate of inflation is. And in order to make sure that that happens, the government is forced to reduce its millage every year if property values increased more than the rate of inflation. What is in front of you on the ballot is asking, do you want to abide by the Headley Amendment, or do you want to abide by the city's charter that you, the people, voted? And so that is what the question is on the Headley Amendment. Full presentation on the website tomorrow, and then I'll do a full presentation where I actually go through the examples of what it means next week. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Pontiac City Clerk Garland Doyle, your closing comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are two weeks away from Election Day today, November 8th, 2022. You can vote by absentee ballot now through November 7th at 4:00 PM in the clerk's office. All registered voters will be receiving a sample ballot this week, like this. It has a sample ballot inside, so please make sure you read it and vote. Last week, the council president mentioned that Pontiac has one of the lowest return rates of absentee ballots. The clerk's office is working to improve voter turnout. As a result, I've partnered with Voters Non-Politicians Voter Education Fund, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that will be doing voter education mailings. Citizens will be receiving two mailings, you may have already received one, from the clerk. As a result of this partnership, those mailings are being paid for by Voters Non-Politicians Voter Education Fund. And then second, the clerk's office is issuing a challenge to the city council to help us increase voter turnout in your council district. We're calling this Pontiac Votes Community Challenge, which is on the screen there. Each council district will compete, we want to increase the percentage of absentee votes based on four years ago, the last state election. Increase voters at the polls, increase the overall voter turnout. So you will see on the screen, the total number of registered voters in your district. So it has the council district, the precinct, the total number of registered voters, who voted absentee in 2018, who voted at the polls, and then those percentages, as well as who's already returned their absentee ballots, what ballots have been mailed, and the return rate of absentee ballots up until this point. So we want to encourage you to help us increase voter turnout in your district. So this is friendly competition. I know there was a lot of competition as a result to the Pride and Beautification, so we would like to get you engaged over these last two weeks to help us increase voter turnout in our city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, City Clerk, and thank you to the clerk's office staff, as well as the poll workers and all community members that will be a part of the process of making sure we have a free, fair, and secure election for all Pontiac citizens. We now are at City Council closing comments. Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford, District One.
Thank you. The greatness of a community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members, that was said by Coretta Scott King. I have a question, what does community engagement look like? Does it mean renaming an era moral after community leader Frank Russell? Does it mean giving Mr. Musgraves the money that he needs to do the Christmas street lighting on South Boulevard? Is community engagement doing cleanups, or is it attending CDC meetings either Zoom or in person unless you sick and/or planning your daughter's graduation? What does community engagement actually look like? Does it look like voting on things that are for the betterment of our community? Does it look like having meetings so that everybody can be included in District One, whether you live on the South Side or the West Side, whether you live downtown? What is true community engagement? I truly want to know. The problem is, is this, for some, community engagement is being belittling. For some, community engagement is challenging people because they don't like your ideas. For some, it's changing things and doing stuff new. For example, Mr. Musgraves calls me and he says, "Miss Councilman Rutherford, I want to do lighting on South Boulevard." He presents the budget, he does the worksheet, it gets approved. It's called due process. Or maybe downtown, when they say, "Councilwoman Rutherford, I want to do a cleanup." They present the budget, it goes for approval, and we get it done. That, to me, is community engagement, and that is what I'll continue to do. In saying that, on Saturday, on October the 29th, from 11:00 to 1:00, we have our District One meeting, it is at the Alley Cat. In November, to try to have fellowship in community, I have challenged everyone from the CDC and everyone else to please come to the fellowship dinner at the Bowen Center from 11:00 to 1:00, which is being sponsored, um, excuse me, which is being catered by lily, lily bees. The purpose of it is to do true fellowship, true community engagement. In December, we'll switch the meetings back to District One downtown at the Alley Cat from 11:00 to 1:00. I don't have the date for December. The second thing about community engagement is November the 20th, I am doing a free coat dress. drive, giving out almost 200 free coats. I brought these out to show you the examples of it. No question asked, all they have to do is either live in District 1, and after we get them done, the first 100, the rest can go to all the other districts. Is that not community engagement? All brand-new coats, because we want to engage the community and we want to make sure that everybody has what they need. Lastly, I'm also doing a turkey giveaway, because that is also included in community engagement. And these are the things that you have to do. You have to push the envelope. You have to make people feel uncomfortable, because real change doesn't come when you're comfortable. Real change comes when we work together and we get past our faults and our fears and we say, "We want to do true community engagement." And on that note, I say, "Good night."
Councilman Brett Nicholson, District 2, your closing comments.
Thank you. I want, for the public's benefit, to read an excerpt from Precision Concrete Cutting's website. Over the next, over the last decade, the company's founder has designed several unique machines that use different techniques instead of grinding sidewalks. Precision Concrete Cutting, who is the vendor that we chose today, does not grind sidewalks. Their machine cuts them. There is a demo on their website. There is not this, the old method of cutting and grinding, that is not what this one does. That is, so grinding is not the issue. There is no grinding. You can watch the demo. It's very, it's very interesting. Thank you to all of our residents that came out last night to the District 2 Citizens Advisory Group. We had a very small showing, so take, you know, that, I know you'll run with it. Yeah, no, but it is, you know, that is typical. We are taking next month off, so don't come the fourth Monday of, I'm sorry, we are back November, we will not be there December. So there will be no December District 2 meeting. We do take December off, but do come the fourth Monday of November. We will be combining our finance committee meetings for the next, the second Thursday, 2:00 PM here in council, the council conference room. So that is for a two-month period. So please, you know, public welcome to come. We go through all of our finances, a couple other standing personnel items, there's a Finance and Personnel Committee, so we'll be going through both of those months. And finance, I just want to make sure that, for the administration, that finance comes prepared with the, with the way in which our legislative council has given them the previous template. So hopefully this will be the first month we get to see that template, and it'll be a lot easier for us to convey some of those financial issues that we've not been able to make as clear as we have in the past. And that's what I have.
Thank you. Councilman Mikhail Goodman, District 3, closing comments.
So I don't have very much to go over, other than I am happy to be able to do the job, to be able to be one of the deliberative minds on this body, to be able to help make good decisions for the city. I will say, I am very happy to see the lights on on the southern half of Baldwin. It makes me very happy to finally have that, to be able to drive home and be able to actually see my way in Bonnali, that it's actually much safer, especially for the population who lives right there. And I do include my concern for making sure that the homeless residents and housing insecure are also protected, so I'm very happy to see that happening. And I mean, realistically, I really don't have much to say, other than this is another week to be doing something to benefit the city. And also, I guess, while this is very aptly on our minds, unfortunately, last week, someone was killed in District 3 from a different city and while working here in the city of Pontiac. And it is extremely unfortunate that, again, we are faced with the loss of life for, in this case, not even one of our own city residents, but done by someone who lives in the city. And we obviously, again, have to constantly have this conversation around what is public safety. And usually I am the one who is often mentioning the need to make sure that we are addressing the other parts of crime prevention, that is not just solving the crime after it's been committed. And unfortunately, in this case, this is just one of those situations where I just hope that the family involved gets the justice that is deserved, because it's unfortunate to see those things happen in our community, to our own residents. But it also says a lot that, you know, it's happening in our city affecting residents from other communities, especially when I just spent with my colleagues many days at MML with actually a council member from the city who this person is from. So really being able to see the effects of how things transition between the boundaries of a city, because these lines are rather arbitrary. So I think that it's just incumbent upon us to continue to do more, to make the city a safer place, not only for us and for our residents, but for anyone else who comes into the city and tries to do commerce here, visit here, or eventually call this place home. So that's all I have to say.
Councilwoman Kathleen James, District 4, closing comments.
Yes, my first announcement is that District 4 Community Council will meet, we will have our first in-person meeting on this Thursday evening at the New Mount Mariah International Church located at 313 West Walton Boulevard. That meeting will take place at 6:00, and I'm looking forward to it. We will have speakers there. Mr. McIntyre from Code Enforcement will be there. We'll have Sergeant Thurco from the Pontiac Community Policing Group. And so we expect to have a really good meeting. So District 4, our first in-person meeting this Thursday, 6:00, at the New Mount Mariah Church. I also want to make the announcement for New Mount Mariah. Mr. President made it as well, but they are having a community event on Halloween Day, Monday, October 31st. They're having a community harvest fest from 6:00 to 8:00 at the church. It's an opportunity for the community to come together. It's going to be a safe space for kids, for families, lots of food, lots of fun. So the community is invited to that event. That's all I really got to say. I also want to make a last comment that, you know, for years I used to attend city council meetings, and I would, you know, hear, the council would go to these various meetings all over the country, you know, municipal meetings. And I would, I would always wonder, you know, why don't they bring back some of the ideas from the meetings, these meetings that they're attending? And we had the opportunity to attend the MML, the Michigan Municipal League Conference in Muskigan on last week. And there really were some tremendous ideas presented to us in that meeting. And hopefully we'll get a chance to, as weeks go by, to share some of those ideas, but just one in particular. We have a municipality in the state of Michigan that has their fire department, they have a public safety department, and they have one person over both fire and police, which I did not think existed anywhere. So it's just a tremendous amount to learn, and we learned a lot. And so hopefully, over the next couple of months, we can share some of the things that we learned in that conference, because, believe me, you know, some of the municipalities are really doing a great job in some of the areas that we're struggling with and that we're looking for solutions and answers for. So more to come on that.
Thank you very much. Councilman William Parker Jr., District 5, closing comments.
Thank you, sir. Words mean something. Contracts mean something. And for a number of times, we as the council have sit here and approve things that we know did not have all the information there. We've done it. And so moving forward, I promise you, we're going to look at it, I'm going to look at it a little bit differently. If the contract says this, it needs to be straightened out, it needs to be fixed, because words mean something. And what we said to Mike sometimes get forgotten, but what's in the writing never goes away. And so we need to make sure those things match. Secondly, I want to thank Councilwoman Mary S. Miller for her continued involvement and action in our district. I just believe, I thank her for what she does, and I want to tell her, I recall, I did call you back. But there's one thing I will not do. I don't get involved in he-said, she-said. I talked to the gentleman, the gentleman corrected the issues that affected the city as it applied to code ordinances and permits. Once he did that, if he's having issues with his neighbors, I had to share with him, that's a personal issue. And if you, if there is such a degree, then you need to call the sheriffs to get that resolved. I don't get involved in your personal issue. I did share with him, though, that if you are doing things that are making your neighbors mad, you need to stop doing those. And he was doing some things, I think, that made some neighbors mad. But the things that affected the city from a city perspective, the code enforcement issues, the permit issues, he presented to us and everything was fine, and that was what I had to check, and that is what he did. Now, if my neighbor don't like the fact that I got a sign hanging up on my deck, that's got nothing to do with me. If my neighbor don't mind that I got approval to put three trucks in my driveway, that's got nothing to do with me. That's between you and your neighbor, and y'all need to work those things out. And now, if you can't, then certainly there are other mechanisms which that can be worked out. Hopefully, they don't hurt each other or harm each other. But I didn't want to get in the middle of something either. So if, if Councilman Miller is going to continue to handle it, I back out of it, because both of us can't handle it. And so, and so, as I said, if she's going to continue to handle it, I'm going to back out and let her handle it. I appreciate all that she handles, because there's certainly a whole lot of other stuff that I can be dealing with while she's handling that issue. So I thank you. I appreciate all the help and assistance that we get, and let's continue to move the city forward. And with that, I say, "Have a great evening."
Thank you, sir. President Pro Tem William A. Carrington, District 6, closing comments.
Thank you, President McGinnis. First and foremost, I'd like to say good evening to everyone. It was great to have the opportunity with a resolution from the city council in coordination with the mayor's office to welcome Anthony Cowes back to the city of Pontiac. That is a beautiful thing, to be let out of prison after 25 years and exonerated for something that you did not do. So I'm honored to just be in this, these chambers tonight, just to be a part, part of this. My condolences to the Miss May Terrell family. The situation that happened this past weekend is very sad, is very sad and should really affect each and everyone in this community. A shout-out to Delia Sharp for Identify Your Dream Foundation's, this past weekend, I was able to play in a charity basketball game, which I learned something very fast after the first four minutes, that I shouldn't have been out there on that court. But it was fun, we had a lot of fun, and the other team cheated, I'm going to say that loud. They fought, they brought three youngsters under 25 to the game, and we had everybody over 45. That didn't seem right and fair at all. But to those old cats that decided to grind it out from a 20-point deficit to hopefully win the game in the closing, closing minute, I salute you. And I got Bengay and everything else after that game, of course. I just want to close with a quote, and this is my quote, it's nobody in particular quote, it's no famous person quote, it's just my quote. "When you are negative about everything, your life becomes a self-fulfilling experience. Your entire being would be formed with negative thoughts or vibes, created cultural negativity and victimhood." This community is a very proud community. We stand on the shoulders of all those that came, our ancestors that come before us. So all we got to do is feed in to the things they done right and correct those things that they done wrong. And that's what a power is. And we can stop this self-fulfilling prophecy that continues, continues to, that continues to just be transferred to another generation. And we can do this by working collectively together. And that's why I sit here. That's why I sit here. I don't have all the answers. I've never told anybody I have all the answers, but I do have a passion and a work ethic to work hard and be the first one out there and the last one leaving. And that's what I promise to the 6th District in the city of Pontiac, my work ethic, a willingness to be collective and working with each other, because that's the only way it gets done. If we want our communities to rise, we have to work collectively together. Also, to the 6th District, I know we've, some of you have been getting hit with code enforcement violations. It's going to be some growing pains, because you told me you want your community to be beautified, you want it cleaned up. So we can't have it both ways. If we're going to clean it up, I'll help you. If you've got a backyard that needs to be cleaned, I'll call me. I'll come out and help you. I've always offered to help, even before code enforcement came out to you. So I'm willing to help, because we have to clean our neighborhoods up. People are complaining, neighbors are tired of living by trash and all those things in our parks, they tired of dumping, and we have to clean it up together. But we can't say we want to, we don't want to clean up, and then you get mad, because the code enforcement came into your house. That's just not, that's a double standard. And everybody, including mine, if they come to my house, I'm going to say, "Thank you." I'll make sure I get it done. I've been here 12 years. I got ticketed on my car from having a car in front of my house that didn't have no plate on it. It's part of the process. But I didn't call it on a city hall and get mad at my councilperson. I called, I said, "You want it moved, I'll get it moved for you." And that's how simple it is. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. I'm Mike McGinnis, District 7, councilperson. A final announcement, a DART and a Laurel. For the final announcement, the Public Safety Community Town Hall, Mayor Grimal and his Anti-Violence Task Force will have that as a final reminder at next week's city council meeting, but that's on November 2nd. The Public Safety Community Town Hall, follow-up updates from the Anti-Violence Task Force, the sheriff, Oakland County Sheriff, as well as the sheriff captain for Pontiac, Captain Ewing, and Oakland County Commissioner Powell will be there with the Anti-Violence Task Force members, including the chair, Kino Phillips. That's November 2nd, 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And the Bowen Senior Center is the venue, 52 Bagley Street in Pontiac. So that's the announcement. The DART is that our former mayor did not accurately represent past budgetary decisions when it came to neighborhood projects. And so the record speaks for itself in terms of how the previous administration conducted those projects, but what was represented in public comment tonight by her was not factually correct. And then the Laurel, I want to say a very happy 40th birthday today to my predecessor, the Honorable Kermit Williams. It's amazing that he is only turning 40, because he has been serving our community for decades. He now is serving as a Pontiac Charter Revision Commissioner. He was, of course, the city councilperson for our District 7 for 12 years, including most recently four years as council president, but his community activism service continues beyond just the limitations of public office, and I hope he has had a fantastic and well-earned celebration on this milestone of his life, which he's already done so much. So I want to give three cheers to District 7 resident and predecessor in this seat, the Honorable Kermit Williams. Happy 40th birthday to you, sir. Many, many decades of happy returns to come. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Parker, that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Hearing no discussion, roll call and adjournment. Clerk Doyle. Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis? Yes. Nicholson?
Yes.
Seven Yates? That motion carries. We stand adjourned at 9:24 PM. Thank you all for your valuable time.